Sony?
Yes.
Is this your stuff or for me? That's for me? Okay, these are not.
All right, welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of March 21st, 2022. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
For today's agenda on Monday, March 21st, 2022, our first item of business is our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Chairman Bowers, thank you so much for having me back once again for a Mayor's Award of Excellence presentation. We're here today to present the Award of Excellence for December of 2021, and I am so pleased to be able to honor a team from the Water Distribution Division of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. And those team members from LTU's Water Service Program is our Bill Stangle, who is a senior water service technician, Alex Stewart, also a water service technician, and Duncan Ellis, who's not here today, he's retired, but also Roger Borchers and Billy Castor, all three of whom have served as utility supervisors. They were nominated by Andy Walker, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Water Construction in the categories of customer relations, loss prevention, productivity, and safety. They covered a lot of ground on a particular day last year, and I want to share with you that we are recognizing them today for their work to repair seven water main breaks throughout the city on one day in late September, when the weather was unusually hot and dry, and those kinds of conditions can cause more stress on our water mains. So Alex Stewart was the faithful person on the end of the call, the very first call. He took the emergency phone calls when the first one came in at 1:30 a.m. And the water main break was in the school bus drop-off lane at Pound Middle School. And Billy Castor and his construction team were on call for emergency response, and they reported to work. They isolated the leak, they made the repair, and they had the water back in service before any LPS staff or students arrived for school. And then Stewart took two more calls around 5:00 a.m. He responded to one, and Bill Stangle responded to the second. And they shut down valves to minimize damage, they obtained information from the 811 Call You, Call Before You Dig system, they arranged for traffic control, and they notified customers of the water outage. And then at 7:00 a.m., Duncan Ellis, Roger Borchers, and their teams began their normal shifts, and they began working to repair the water main breaks. And over the next several hours, Stangle responded to three more water main breaks while Ellis, Borchers, and Castor efficiently coordinated their team's efforts. The last water main was fixed and placed back into service around 5:00 p.m. The teams repaired all of the water main breaks while working in excavations in traffic lanes and around dangerous utilities. So these five employees and all the support staff involved really worked diligently that day to make these repairs safely and efficiently while reducing public and private property damage. While Walker wrote in his nomination for these teams that, quote, "Above all, their work is done in a manner that protects the safety of water delivered to customers. It's also important to note that these staff are specially trained and have years of experience, which allows them the unique ability to make critical decisions to restore water service." So the Lincoln Water System wanted to be sure that we thanked the other LTU team members who provided equipment and support during these emergencies, and they include employees at street maintenance, traffic engineering, the wastewater system, and right-of-way services. So I hope you will please join me in both acknowledging that this is just another day in the life of employees at the Lincoln Water System. This looks extraordinary to us, but this is what they're prepared to do on any given day. And also, if you could join me in congratulating Alex Stewart, Billy Castor, Bill Stangle, Duncan Ellis, and Roger Borchers for their hard work and their commitment to the city of Lincoln and its people that rely on them for their professional expertise and incredible service. Please join me in clapping for them. And if the gentleman could come up as their names are called, we're going to, sorry, hand out the awards. Alex Stewart?
Congratulations. I'm just gonna stay here.
Billy Castor?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Bill Stangle?
Congratulations.
Roger Borchers?
Thank you.
And then Duncan, again, as I said, isn't here today. LTU Director Liz Elliott would like to say a few words, and so if you could stay here standing while she gives some comments.
I'll make it short so you don't have to stay there long, but it is an honor to be able to recognize these four individuals. As the mayor said, it is a team effort, and it's a department-wide team effort from water, wastewater, right-of-way, and streets. But these four individuals, day in and day out, go above and beyond. And most of the time, especially like this, it's while the rest of us are sleeping peacefully in our bed, and we don't recognize and realize what is going on behind the scenes. Thankfully, we don't have seven water main breaks every day, but we're confident knowing that our lives will be relatively uninterrupted because of all of them and the work that they do, and it often goes unrecognized. But I hope the four of you know that your work is greatly appreciated. Their commitment to the city often goes unrecognized, but it is greatly appreciated, and thank you for everything that you do. And it's nice to be able to publicly recognize some of this work that does go on behind the scenes, so thank you very much.
Would you like a chance to say something?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, they don't have family members today, but they do have lots of folks at LTU who are very pleased and here being supportive, so, once again, if you could join me in a round of applause, and we'll go out and take a break.
Thank you so much, and thank you so much for the service to the city.
Our next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on Items 1 or 2? Is there anyone here to speak on Items 1 or 2? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We cannot vote on these items. Item 1A is approving the On-Call Professional Services Task Order Agreement between the City of Olson, the city and Olson, to provide preliminary engineering services for the 48th, 56th, and Calvert Intersection Improvement Project, introduced by Washington.
So moved second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving the On-Call Professional Services Task Order Agreement between the city and Olson to provide environmental services for the 48th, 56th, and Calvert Intersection Improvement Project, introduced by Washington.
So moved second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is approving the On-Call Professional Services Task Order Agreement between the city and Olson to provide environmental services for the Cornuscar Highway 39th and L-55X Rehabilitation Project, introduced by Washington.
So moved second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is approving the On-Call Professional Services Task Order Agreement between the city and Olson to provide preliminary engineering services for the Cornuscar Highway 39th to L-55X Rehabilitation Project, introduced by Washington.
So moved second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That ends our consent agenda. We move on to Section 4, which is our public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. I'll be calling Items 4A, 4B, and 4C together. Item 4A is Annexation 22001, Application of Roca Bee Holdings LTD and Southview Inc. to annex approximately 42.35 acres, more or less, on property generally located at South 70th Street and Roca Bee Road, and the related change of zone 22003, Applications of Roca Bee Holdings LTD and Southview Inc. to change from AG Agriculture District to R3 Residential District on property legally located at South 70th Street and Roca Bee Road, and the related change of zone 21022A, Applications of Roca Bee Holdings LTD and Southview Inc. to change from AG Agriculture District to R5 Residential District PUD to expand the existing Grand View Estate Second Edition PUD by approximately 9.8 acres for a total of approximately 911 multiple family dwelling units and 50,000 square feet of commercial floor area on property generally located at South 70th Street and Roca Bee Road.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Hendrickson, did you want to speak on this item? Nope, okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling Items 4D and 4E together. Change of Zone 21054, Application of Waterford Estates LLC to change from AG Agriculture District to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District on property generally located at North 98th Streets and Boathouse Road, and the related use permit of 21010, Application of Waterford Estates LLC on behalf of Waterford Estates LLC to allow up to 505 multifamily dwelling units and 48,000 square feet of commercial floor area on approximately 24.24 acres with associated waivers on property generally located at North 98th Street and Boathouse Road.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with Rembold Lukey Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of the developer, Aristos Property LLC. And so first, I'm going to start with a general overview of the project, what we're asking for to hear today with the change of zone and use permit. Next, I want to go to, into a couple of the details on the change of zone and some amendments to conditions of approval that we're asking for. So first, on this site, what are we looking to build? We're looking for a change of zone from AG to B2 Commercial. To B2 Commercial, to allow a luxury apartment community. We're looking at a maximum of 505 units, and if you look at this use permit, it also allows some mix of commercial along the east side of the project. Now, there's some, as of now, the intent is to build this all out as residential with the potential for commercial, but a lot of that's going to depend on market demand as the project builds out. So first, I want to, I'm actually really excited to show you a couple pictures just to give you a feel for what we're looking to build here. This developer prides itself, this developer has a different project that's at 40th and Hohensy Drive. They pride themselves on the, on the quality of the community they build, both inside and out. What you will notice is that with these units, with these units, there will be amenities such as ample green space, ample parking, they plan to incorporate a dog run, swimming pool, and clubhouse, a lot of amenities to really suit that luxury apartment community feel that we're working on building. This project is intended to phase from the south to the north, so, let's see. Here's the preliminary site layout. The project is intended to start with this connection from Boathouse Road with these buildings, and then as it phases, to build up to the north. So that means that we'll get, it will be six to eight years before this builds out closer to the existing single-family residential within the rest of Waterford. This commercial on this side that has the flexibility to be commercial or residential, based on how things build out in the future. As far as the height, these buildings will range in, could range in height from three to four stories. The intent that, there's still some flexibility with that, but the intent would be if they're going to be four stories, that would be closer to O Street and closer to the south side of the property with the three-story buildings on the north side of the property, again, as you get closer to the existing single-family residential. So then the next question is, how does this fit into the community? I know that has been a big question with, with the neighborhood as we have spoken to them, and also as there are significant other projects that are being developed into the area. So this is part of this project, and this commercial is part of the Waterford Lake community. And what that means is that essentially, it uses Waterford Lake for its stormwater runoff. When this entire area was planned, it was planned with this area being commercial, with an air, with the area on the east side of, I think that's 98th Street, on the east side of 98th Street next to O Street being commercial, with the residential to the north. And so all of that area, stormwater drains into Waterford Lake. So basically, it's just a, from some perspectives, a large detention cell, a large detention cell only with some value add to the neighbors. So for as far as this commercial property is concerned, it is under covenants that it are responsible for a portion of the cost to maintain Waterford Lake, and that is the cost to maintain it as the detention cell essentially that serves this commercial complex. This property will not have access, and the tenants of the, of the apartment building will not have access to Waterford Lake. Client is aware of that, and is aware that they will make their residents aware that they will not have access to Waterford Lake for recreational purposes. And so, also to give you an idea of current zoning, we have a zoning map here that shows that there is actually a portion of the project site that is already zoned B2. So why this was done, well, this is black and white, but it shows you, on the project site, this is existing B2 zoning that's part of the project site, this is the area of the change of zone. So this is part of the, this here is part of the project site, it's also part of the use permit, the change of zone is just this area. That was done way back in 2008, when the Waterford project was laid out and those original coven, original covenants were filed, so that the neighbors would know that this is going to be developed commercial. So that's why that strip is, was there, it has been there as the neighborhood has built out, so everyone was very aware, as they bought their lots there, that it would be commercial. It was actually even a term that was incorporated into the covenants of the residential neighborhood, just an acknowledgement that this area would eventually develop commercial with uses that are allowed in the B2 zoning district. All right, so with that overview of the project and how it fits into the community, next, let's talk about what we're asking for as far as a motion to amend, the motion to amend the use permit. So generally, the, we're changing the zone for the entire site to be B2. With B2 zoning designation, a use permit is always required, and that's because B2 allows a mix of commercial and residential, like apartment building. And so as you mix those, the city needs, you need a use permit to show the site plan how you're going to mix those uses to make sure that you mix them in a way that's compatible. So a use permit is always required with this zoning, that's why we're having the change of zone and a use permit come forward at the same time. We're asking for allowance of up to 505, 505 units, and the potential, the flex potential for commercial. As a condition, there are two conditions, we are requesting for two amendments to the conditions of approval suggested by the planning department for this change of zone and use permit. Those two amendments are first regarding the, first regarding the street on the south portion of this project site. You'll see I put a red line down the middle of the street so that it's easier to see what we're talking about. So one of the conditions was to build out this street on the south side of the project as a public street, and that, the issue is, is that this public street serves only the properties to the west. So as you will see, as you can see here, if I can zoom in, maybe that would help. Testing my, my electronic skills, oh. As you can see, this is a private, private roadway, private drive that's going to have parking on either side, so it's not, not a public street. A condition of zoning is that we, the developer would build this road as a public street that would give access to these properties that's going to be the SCC development. The issue is, is that that road will serve only that development, it won't, because we have these private drives serving the rest of the, the developer's project site, it won't, won't be of any use to this development, and there's no timeline for when the SCC project will build out and utilize that road. So that's why we are asking in our motion to amend that the developer would still be required to build this portion of the street, and that is so, and build it 33 feet wide, that's the width for a commercial street to serve this north, private roadway, still be required to build that, and to dedicate the right-of-way for this street, but that it not be required to build that street as of now, as the, there is no final plat for the property to the west to actually use that, to take access from and use that street. The next amendment that we're asking for is that you will know, as there is another condition of approval, and that was to build the southbound turn lane at the intersection of 98th and Waterford Estates Drive. So... I will pull up my map here to help, help us visualize this. Well, here's the map. Okay, so that would be to build a southbound turn lane right here. I will move this down so you can see that better, a southbound turn lane right here. The issue is, is that as a part of this project, the developer was required to do a traffic study. Brad Marshall with Olson is going to, can provide more details on that, but what that traffic study ultimately showed is that this, this project is not driving significant traffic at that intersection, and that would use that southbound turn lane at this intersection. And therefore, we're asking that since this project is not, since this project is not generating the traffic that would require that turn lane, this project not be required to bear the cost of it. If we're not generating the problem, we shouldn't have to pay for the turn lane. And so, I would also note that this project will generate significant impact fees, and that those could be used to build the traffic, the turn lane, in the, at the future. And as a final note, if we look at the phasing of this project, phasing of, this project, as I said, it's intended to phase from south to north, and so that's where these will be built first, going to drive the traffic to the clubhouse and to the pool and all these amenities that will build first. This connection, right here, this will be a full-access connection, which would drive any trips that would be generated moving south and turning here, would likely to be driven by this connection point, the full-access connection point. And so that won't be built out for six to eight years. And so where this project is, as this project phases out, first, it won't drive traffic, it doesn't drive significant trips to that point, and second, even when it does drive any traffic to that point, it won't be for six to eight years in the future. And so, with that, what we're asking first with the emotion to amend that I know was provided to the council members today, is first, the amend regarding the timing on the building, building of the street on the south side of the project, and second, on the requirement to build that southbound turn lane. And finally, that if this project, if the council is unwilling to approve this project without that southbound turn lane, that there be a requirement and not be built until the project makes that connection to Waterford Estates on the north side of the project, so that six to eight years in the future, when it might actually be driving traffic there. And finally, that, that with the direction that there be an agreement between the city and the developer to be reimbursed by directed impact fees to build that turn lane. So with that, we'll ask your support of the project, and I will entertain any questions. Otherwise, also with me are, is Beau Jones and Brent Lucian with the developer, and then also Brad Marshall is available in here that will give more details on the traffic study, the trip generation, especially at that intersection of 98th Street and Waterford Estates Drive, to answer any questions on that. to answer any questions on that.
Are there any questions for Ms. Post? Oh, Councilman Beck, yes?
So, Ms. Post, at this point in time, you and the city have not had conversations about directing those impact fees in a certain manner.
We've had preliminary conversations that this is impact, is reimbursable, because it's an improvement to an arterial street. Also, that there are currently impact fees generated and there being directed to other improvements. So, what that means is that, under such an arrangement, the developer wouldn't be reimbursed, there's no timeline to know when they'd be reimbursed for this. It would be a, no, they'd be forced to float that cost for an uncertain time in the future, until other improvements are already repaid, that other developers have made are already repaid from the impact fees in the area, and then it would finally get to reimbursing this developer. So as you can imagine, continuing to pay interest on a significant capital improvement for an uncertain time in the future is a big expense for the project to bear, and why the preference would be to not have to build that, to not build that turn lane, and, but still be paying impact fees, so those could be used in the future to pay for the turn lane.
Thank you. Any further questions? Did anyone of the other applicants want to come and speak? Okay. None?
Are we here to have?
Yes.
My name is Beau Jones. I'm one of the developers, and with me today is...
Brent Lucian.
So, we're here to answer any questions you may have. There's been a lot of discussion back and forth, and just kind of here to share any insight if we have any.
Are there any questions from the council members? Councilman Washington?
I do, thank you very much, and welcome. Can you tell me a little bit about the conversations you've had with your neighbors? We've certainly received a lot of stuff from them, with some concerns about expectations, and some of it, I think, has, is not really the purview of city council, but I would like to know what your meetings have been like with your neighbors?
Primarily, discussions have been with the residential neighbors to the north, and then Brad Marshall is also working on the SCC project to the west. So that's been our primary focus. Neighbors to the north, we did have a neighborhood association meeting. We welcomed them down to our other Aristo's property down at 40th and Hohensie. Very limited turnout. We wanted to hold it down there, just to show the example of what it is that we're going to build. Brad is very aware of what SCC is doing to the west, so the two most impacted neighbors we have been working with, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of folks have said, you know, "We bought here, thinking that the neighborhood was one thing, and now it's changing." And so there is a feeling that things have shifted without their being aware of it. And I was interested to hear what Ms. Post had to say about B2 already being in existence there as commercial and that being known, but I just wanted to touch base on that, and then I will have questions about traffic. And you want to weigh in on traffic, you can.
Nope. Nope, I'm out.
I would like to share one thing. We did address some concerns with the neighbors, and we, they had written some letters, and we tried to address those to, just answer questions that they have, because we certainly want to be a good part of the community and do good quality projects. So, you know, we want to be, we want to be a good community member.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay, see, if you guys would sign in, that would be, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll invite Brad Marshall, and then after that, we'll open it up to the public hearing.
Good afternoon, council members. Brad Marshall, 601 P Street, Suite 200. So Olson has been involved with this project a very, very long time. Back in 2006, we actually had performed an overall development traffic study, showing what some of the improvements would have to be, including all of what 98th Street would look like eventually. As of note, that original study did show turn lanes and so forth be implemented primarily in when you do your future, and that original study was like 2015, so we're way beyond that. The city did improvements from Waterford Estates Drive to Holdridge Street around 2013. Olson assisted the city in the design of those facilities. Basically, they built the east lanes of that future arterial roadway. There's five intersections from Waterford Estates Drive to Holdridge, and for whatever reason, no turn lanes, permanent or temporary, were actually installed as part of that project. There, for instance, might just show a little image of what 2014 looked like. And if it, because I'm going to be asked, what's different from now to then? And this is, so as you can see, this is the four lane built from O to Waterford Estates Drive, and then the two lane up to Holdridge Street. So there were connections being made here, and on the west side, where you have a significant amount of housing already under development. Access management policy, which was adopted in 2012, would have stated that any connection that was made to 98th Street should have been implemented, turn lanes at that time. Again, we don't really know why they were not installed as part of that project, but they are being requested now. The traffic study was done as part of this project, it was a category one. So what that means is, we took this project only, and we looked at the impacts of this project immediate, after full development of this. We didn't look at plans of Waterford Estates Drive, or Waterford Estates with the residential, or the commercial that's impending on the east side of 98th Street, or Southeast Community College, which lands, owns the land to the west. We did not look at those impacts as part of this study, just the apartment project. So, what has been requested is that turn lane to be installed. What has been communicated to me primarily from L T U is because we are increasing the AM and PM trips. And that is, that is true. Under, again, just going back to the original access management policy that was adopted, the turn lane is required, just because there is a connection. This project is not directly connecting to Waterford, to 98th Street, but it is adding trips that are on Waterford Estates Drive to 98th Street, so the city has asked for that turn lane to be included as the overall, as part of the overall project. So, I think what's important as far as this is looked at, one, if you determine that Aristo would be required to do it, the alternative motion that's in front of you also. What Ann has shown is that until that, that north, I'll call it the northwest or west drive, that we call it in our report, as part of the project, there's two drives that will be connected. There's an eastern drive, which is a private roadway here, that will be, will prevent, it will be a right-in, right-out only. So, anybody coming from the development will only be able to make right-hand turns. Anybody coming from 98th will not be able to turn left directly into the development. So as the alternative motion to amend, we do not show any trips being generated to this project until that west drive is connected. And as we've indicated, this project will be phased, starting from the south end to the north end. And so, just even from the financial side of things, as Ann pointed out, right now, impact fees are being directed to the 104th and Holdridge Street project for the roundabout. Waterford Estates Drive, or Waterford Estates LLC has dedicated all of the impact fees within Waterford to that project currently. If, if they were to have to install this right turn lane and amend the annexation agreement, then at least phasing this south to north would give them some time to collect some additional impact fees, that project be paid off, and then at least put some money into the, the impact fee collections into the area to pay for it. So with that, I think, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Ann said this, but it was about, it's about $800,000, so it would be generated from the 505 units for the impact fees, so.
Are there any questions for Mr. Marshall? Nope. Okay, seeing none, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Go ahead, and I will call items 4F and 4G together. It is to Waterford. Do we need to? Okay.
Go back out?
You're going back out.
I'm sorry.
Too bad.
Item 4F is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22003, Application of the Planning Director to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise the future land use map from commercial and urban density, residential to public and semi-public, on property legally generally located at Waterford Estates Drive and Linwood Lane. And the related change of zone 22001, Application of Southeast Community College to change the AG Agriculture District to B2 Plan at Neighborhood Business District and R3 Residential District, P Public Use District and O3 Office District to P Public Use District of property generally located at Waterford Estates and Linwood Lane.
Good afternoon, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Here to represent, obviously there is an application here from the planning department, but also to note that the representative for the applicant on this item was unable to attend today, and is requesting that this get, the, continue the public hearing to next week, so that we can have that person in attendance as well. My recommendation would be to see if anybody is here today for the public hearing, see if they want to give their testimony today, but then continue the public hearing to next week, so that we can have that person here in attendance.
So we need a motion to delay with continued public hearing?
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion to continue public hearing. Sorry, how many weeks did you say?
One week.
One week, okay. Thanks.
I'll...
Councilman Washington?
I'll motion to continue the public hearing through next week.
Second. Okay, moved by Councilman Washington, second by Councilman Beck, yes? Councilman Washington, you have the floor.
All right, I do have a question. So, I appreciate that we can hold a public hearing today for anyone who's here, but we also are not going to have the presentation from the applicant until next week, correct? So I guess I would just want to make that very clear, so that folks who want to hear what the applicant has to say will come back next week, even if you testify this week. All right.
Thank you. Any other discussion about the motion to delay for, the motion to continue public hearing for a week?
No.
Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Chau?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Oh, excuse me.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1, or 6-0.
Do we have the public hearing now? You made a call, and nobody came for it.
No one came for it. Okay. Since we motioned to delay our continued public hearing for a week, seeing no other public members here to speak on that item, we'll go ahead and move on.
Move on to item, section 5, item 5A, Amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 2.18 Purchasing Division by Adding a New Section Number 2.18.034 Entitled Contractor Provisions to Incorporate a Bid Incentive for Apprentice Utilization.
Thank you, council members. This is a continuation of the public hearing, with action set to take place today for a final vote. As a reminder, this ordinance seeks to put out some contractor provisions, including a bidding incentive to recognize wage and job training contributions of a bidder participating in an apprenticeship program as one of the review criteria, along with other review criteria like cost and experience. Apprenticeship programs can be sponsored by employers, employer associations, or labor unions. I see that we have some folks testify here and provide public comment. We'll be open up for public comment. If you could please state your name and address and sign in, it would be greatly appreciated. Testimony's limited, five minutes per speaker.
Friends, it's good to be here with you again. Sometimes I actually miss these meetings, but only sometimes. And as you know, my name's Roy Christensen. I'm here to speak today in favor of unions and their apprenticeship programs. Unions and their apprenticeship programs are powerful forces for good in our community. They add value wherever they go, and they do this at least two ways. One is they bring quality to the work. Two, they bring prosperity to their homes, to their neighborhoods, and communities. They are an important part in solving one of the bigger problems we have in our state right now, which is a lack of skilled labor. They're working to improve this situation. The challenge I see that you have today is to find a way to enhance the apprenticeship programs that unions provide, giving us skilled workers, to maintain those jobs here in Lincoln with job providers that are here in Lincoln. It's a big job, but we know you're up to it. So, to summarize my position today, unions and their apprenticeship programs are powerful tools. They add to add value to our community through bringing quality to the work and prosperity to everyone.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions for?
Are there any questions for former Councilman Christensen? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public comment at this time?
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Lockard, President of Hampton Commercial Construction. Hampton Construction is a longtime member of the Association of General Contractors, Nebraska Building Chapter. I'm here today representing our membership. During the past three months, much communication and information has been exchanged regarding this ordinance. We feel much learning has taken place, and efforts have been made to understand both sides. We appreciate the city council's work in understanding our concerns, and council members, Raybold's efforts in proposed amendment. However, we still oppose this amendment adopted by the city council. We recognize the need for more labor in our industry, and most of us have made great efforts to encourage more people into our industry. We have asked specifically how this ordinance will provide a pathway to more labor in our industry. It doesn't solve the problem, but it adds more cost to the city and to its contractors. We believe this ordinance will cost the city and contractors administrative expense to implement the program. More importantly, this ordinance will cost taxpayers, us taxpayers, more. Not only will it require more paperwork and tracking as previously stated, this ordinance will allow for contracts to be written to contractors who are not necessarily the low bid. The costs will be placed directly on the shoulders of the taxpayers. It is concerning that no one seems to care about this. Our membership is made up of top-quality premier contractors and subcontractors. AGC Nebraska represents non-union and union contractors alike. AGC Nebraska Chapter, Nebraska Underground Contractors, and ABC members are all top-quality premier contractors of the construction industry, who year after year help the city grow with new and remodeled buildings. We all spend significant dollars every year on training for our employees. We spend major dollars every year supporting apprenticeships, sponsorship programs, internship programs, and funding for multiple, multiple recruitment programs into the construction industry. All of us have competitive wages, benefits, compensation plans. If we didn't, we wouldn't get anybody hired or retain our workforce. We win hard-bid work in a fair and competitive way, based on qualifications and ability to do the job, estimate... do the job, estimate, schedule, and execute the project. As councilmembers, you are charged with passing ordinances and making changes that benefit the citizens of Lincoln. I want to challenge you to look back over the past few weeks. The majority of the supporters for this ordinance are outside of the city of Lincoln. The opponents to this ordinance are small businesses and organizations who live and work inside of Lincoln. We are the most impacted by this ordinance, and this is why we're speaking out against it. Please listen to us and vote against this ordinance. There are other ways to be supportive of our workforce development, and we will gladly work with you on these solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thanks so much for coming down.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Jack Russell. I'm the Policy and Research Coordinator for the Lincoln Independent Business Association, or LIBA. For the record, we're located at six-twenty North Forty-eighth Street. I'm here today to voice concerns that our members have related to the proposed changes to Municipal Code Chapter two-eighteen. LIBA is supportive of apprenticeship training, and these programs could play a major role in addressing some of the labor shortages that many of our local businesses face. However, even with the added amendments, the language in this ordinance raises concerns for local contractors and taxpayers. As written, this ordinance will raise costs. There will be an administrative cost to the city to implement the program, passing along a tag, a cost to taxpayers. Because of the regulatory burden, some companies may choose not to bid on projects because of the additional cost and red tape involved, thus reducing the number of bidders and competition for each project due to the preference requirement. Additionally, because of the incentives of this program, it is possible that the city would be awarding project bids based not on merit or to the lowest responsible bidder, but by artificial requirements. All of these result in higher costs for our city and taxpayers. We feel this ordinance would raise costs and add a hurdle for contractors. Additionally, we view this incentive as unnecessary because companies are already doing all they can to establish training programs and address their workforce issues. Again, our organization supports apprenticeship programs and encourages their growth, but we fear that this ordinance will have unintended and negative consequences for our local contractors and raise costs on taxpayers. For these reasons, LIBA is opposed to the ordinance as presented. With that, I'll thank you for your time and take any questions if you have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Russell?
No.
Seeing none, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to provide, uh, public comment on this?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Jeremy Montgomery, fifteen forty-two South First Street, uh, representing Stevens and Smith and testifying in opposition, um, of this ordinance. Uh, first, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this ordinance. I'd also like to thank you for your interest, um, and your concern in the workforce shortage issue the construction industry faces. It is a major challenge that we've been struggling with since the recession of oh-eight, oh-nine. We lost a lot of people in those years, and we've never gained them back. Over the past decade, I've done an extreme amount, um, of advocating for construction careers. I'm a voting member of Builder Nebraska, which is an organization dedicated to creating awareness of construction careers focusing on parents, teachers, counselors, and students. Um, I co-chair a Careers and Construction Committee for the Home Builders Association of Lincoln, where we create a bridge between the home builders of Lincoln and the Lincoln Public School System and, and surrounding schools. I'm inactive with the AGC Building Chapter Workforce Development Committee, who focuses and supports AGC student chapters around the state, including the Lincoln campus. I've helped coordinate or assist in dozens of hands-on construction career days across Nebraska. Those who know me can testify without a doubt my passion, my drive, and involvement to decrease the skills gap, so allow me to share these reasons of opposition. Uh, first, uh, I am unaware of any cost analysis or any financial impact this would have to our city taxpayers. We have already heard the potential costs associated with the five percent bid incentive. Where is the funding mechanism for this ordinance? Do we really believe that it is a taxpayers of Lincoln's financial responsibility to incentivize an apprenticeship program? I believe taxpayers would be very disappointed to learn about this ordinance. Number two, I believe this ordinance has a nar- has a very narrow view of what is considered acceptable training for our workforce. I mentioned in my letter back in January that the concrete industry utilizes the American Concrete Institute to verify credentials for qualified bidders. For example, the ACI has an advanced concrete flatwork finisher, so if the city was to build a fire station or a library, um, in the contract documents, an engineer would reference ACI three-oh-one, which is specifications for concrete construction. This states that any concrete work over ten thousand square feet is required to always have a minimum of at least one flatwork finisher on the job. To certify as a flatwork finisher, um, uh, you must have, verify forty-five-hundred hours of field experience through your employer and pass a written exam or even a performance exam. Nebraska has had in pla- has had this in place since the bid nineties. We've certified over four-hundred-and-fifty flatwork finishers in the state, and a hundred of those being certified in here in Lincoln. Uh, number three, I believe this, uh, ordinance is discriminatory because it does not apply to the vast majority of Lincoln construction businesses, because the vast majority of construction companies in Lincoln do not have a USDOL apprenticeship program, and I think you guys have heard, um, this quite a few times in our meetings and our letters, um, that were submitted with the council. Hence, you will be putting Lincoln-based construction companies and their employees that you represent at a competitive disadvantage. Lastly, this ordinance does not solve the problem of closing the skills gap. Over the past ten years and my own involvement with advocating for construction careers and observing those in the field, skill isn't the issue. We have a shortage of people issue. In Nebraska, there are more than three, uh, uh, more than three job openings per job seeker, the highest ratio in the country. Near the end of two, twenty-twenty-one, it was reported that Nebraska had sixty-nine-thousand job openings with only twenty-three-thousand people looking for work. And in my opinion, if we want to close that skills gap, we got to have more construction career awareness in our public school system.
One minute.
We also need to change the perception on construction careers, and we need to create more pathways into the trades, all trades, not just a select few. I urge the council to vote no in this, in, on this ordinance. Um, and in closing, Stevens and Smith Construction Company has not only spent the last fifty years building this community we call Lincoln, but we've also spent a tremendous amount of money and resources on construction career awareness. We've allocated time presenting to grade school, middle school, high schools, two-year schools, four-year colleges, promoting construction careers. We've spent a lot of money, um, on our own workforce and industry certifications, educational seminars, OSHA training, onboard training, leadership training, first aid and CPR training, and annual training. We offer competitive wages, great health insurance, matching 401K, employee stock ownership plans, payroll savings, and employee assistance programs. Yet, after all that, to learn that this ordinance recognizes none of that above is extremely disappointing and disheartening. Um, with that, I'll take any questions that the council may have.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to provide comment?
We do have two microphones available, so if anyone is interested in public comment, you can come forward.
My name's Bob Bixler, thirty-nineteen Cable Avenue, and I'm actually up here to say I am for the training in this ordinance because I've worked for many of these other contractors in town who say they trained. And I wasn't properly trained until I went through an apprenticeship training, and when I went through my apprenticeship training, I had been in the trade fifteen years and came in as a third-year apprentice in a training program. I learned better training than any other contractor in this town taught me through the apprenticeship program and through the union. And what I do and pay my dues, we pay in our hourly contracts for the apprenticeship. And we don't pay to school, we get paid to learn and do this, and we're the highest qualified in this town, and everyone else cuts our throats because they're not willing to train their people as well as we are. And I have built some of the biggest projects here with union contracts. I worked for Kiwi, down where we did the Hay Market, and had worked, ran their crews for Canopy Street Loft Apartments, the Hyatt Hotel, and the Rail Yard. And it was all highly-trained company. So yes, I am for this, uh, amendment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Uh, Matt Scott, seven-oh-four Glen Arbor Circle. Uh, I'm here in support of this ordinance. As I said last time, a lot of, a lot of contractor, everybody's trying to make this a union, non-union issue. That is not what this is, that is not what it's about, and it's not the direction that this is, was meant to go in. Um, the issue that we have is we need to build the craftsmen of the next generation. With all the high schools that we have in Lincoln and around the state, bringing shop classes and auto classes back to, uh, the students, we need a way in Lincoln to attract these guys, uh, graduates from out of Lincoln and keep the ones that we have in Lincoln to stay in Lincoln. Um, I had a son, I still got a son. Um, my, my son went to work as a, as a CW, a, a pre-apprentice more or less, and, uh, they sent him to Grand Island every single day for a month and a half. He dropped out of the program, and he's going to school now to be a PT assistant. The trades completely lost him. We have to have a way to encourage our contractors to hire more apprentices and to keep them here in Lincoln, and that's what this does. Um, Lincoln is a beautiful city to live and work in. This, uh, if we don't attract some new contractors, I, I know we hear this a lot, you know, it's going to bring in an element, it's going to bring contractors from out of town. Well, we want those contractors from out of town, don't we? What we're gonna, what we're building is, I mean, they're gonna go to our bars, they're gonna go to our restaurants, they're gonna shop at our malls, they're gonna use, go to our gas stations, they're gonna live in this community while they're here. It doesn't mean they're gonna pack up and take off right afterwards. Some of them could put down roots. Um, some of the contractors that are worried about out-of-town contractors coming in and competing with them, would they be willing to shut down their out-of-town offices? Because they have quite a few of them out there. You know, they, it's all about the competition, it's about a legitimate contractor bidding against a legitimate contractor, and, and that's what we're going after here, along with trying to get apprentices to live and stay in this town and work in the trades. It's a super-hard thing to do. I know a ton of high school grads that have dropped out because either they can't get hired or they were treated too meanly on the job and left. Um, some of the guys are gonna say that, uh, that, that oppose this, that it costs more money. Well, as I said, it's, I think it's gonna bring in new con- bringing in new contractors is gonna generate more revenue for the city, uh, just with the, just with the payroll verification on it. It's gonna make sure that all employees on the job site are actually paying taxes. That's gonna generate tax income. That's gonna help. Uh, I'm in support of this message. Oh, the other one that kind of bugs me is, uh, they said, a lot of them are saying that ten percent is too high. One in ten is too high to train? I, I don't think so. I'm in support of this ordinance, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Thank you.
I'll fill this out. My name's Christopher, oop, I apologize. My name's Christopher Anderson, I live at forty-seven-twenty Birmingham Court, and I'm here to, I'm here to testify in support of this ordinance. I'm convinced that what we're gonna gain from doing this is far more significant than the ten percent that's involved in the, in the offset. I am, uh, like Bob Bixler, a man that worked in this town for fifteen years for contractors that were here last time. Uh, I haven't worked for Stevens and Smith, but I recognize that a lot of contractors in this town are having trouble finding the good qualified help, and part of it is the rate that they're paying does not appear to match the area rate that the union guys are making. The apprentices that they have can be apprentices for what appears to be, like Bob said, fifteen years later, we still haven't been taught the trade. That was my experience exactly. Uh, also went to the union and was immediately brought up to speed within a short period of time on the parts of the trade that had been kept from me. I am convinced that part of the problem is we have a lot of very qualified journeymen like myself, as well as apprentices that are union, that are not working in this area because the local contractors aren't, aren't offering union jobs to them here. Uh, I, like Bixler, have done a lot of work in this town union. In other words, we've already been coming in with the union, getting work at different types of stuff. All this is gonna do is make it easier from bring more of us in here and keep more of the local guys working right here in this town. It's gonna help, so. With that, I'll put my name and address down here if somebody else wants to talk. I'd take questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm Zachary Norman, I live at forty-six-oh-five Lowell Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska. I spoke last time. I'm not from here, I'm from Grand Island. Um, I worked out there non-union, uh, for six years, ran my own crew for a drywall company, I was getting paid like thirteen bucks an hour, it was pretty awful. Um, moved back to Lincoln, joined the apprenticeship again, it would've been two thousand sixteen, so I left, joined the union, or the apprenticeship in two thousand seven, left in two thousand eight when everything fell apart, moved back to home to Grand Island, worked, moved back up here for a better wage in two thousand and sixteen, and, um, better benefits, uh, it's really the reason why. I'm, honestly, I, I kind of keep wanting to go east because more of the work is in Omaha, so I mean, I'm thinking about moving my family out to Grand. Now, I bought a house here, I'm remodeling my house, I'm trying to fix it up, make it nice for the next person behind me, I don't plan on staying in that house forever, but, you know, the skills that I've learned through the apprenticeship, through the trade, have got me to the point where I can do that kind of stuff. And I love this city, I love living here, it's, it's a beautiful town. I moved my mom up here, she lives with me now, and she's gonna get to see this town in the spring when I think it's the most beautiful here, so that's exciting for me. So I, I definitely support, you know, the apprenticeship, because that's what it's about, it's about the apprenticeship and the guys and the training that are giving back to the communities, you know, in ways kind of like what I'm doing with my home, you know, making this place better, and I, I build lots of projects around this town too. And i- if it helps, if supporting this amendment helps, um, apprentices in this community get the training and get work here, then it gets my vote, of course. That's all I got, you got any questions?
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Campbell, I reside at five-thirty-five West Saunders Avenue here in Lincoln, Nebraska. I am, uh, supporting for this amendment, or for this provision. Uh, I was an apprentice here in Lincoln when we first had a union hall here, I had to travel to Omaha to do my apprenticeship, which is fine, I was only one week at, uh, a year, or one week, a month, for four months, I believe. But, um, I really think that if I could've stayed here and worked in Lincoln, I would've had a lot better chances for my family and, and things like that to progress, as I worked primarily in Omaha. So I think that this apprenticeship provision is a great thing for Lincoln, I think it would help us grow as, uh, skilled workers, so I'm all for it. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions?
No.
Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members. Um, my name is Juan Alvarado, thirty-sixty Titus Ave, I am from Omaha. But I held a position that I represent about fifty of your constituents, that's why I'm here. I want to give them an opportunity so they can say I can stay home more often. You see some of our members that are saying, hey, I want to be building my community too. Now, I have some questions on some of these individuals who have testified against it, some of them are members of ABC, they already have a registered apprenticeship. Now, if they're afraid to put the apprentices' ratio in place... Now, if they're afraid to put the apprentices' ratio in place, then say it. But don't say it's gonna cost us more money. Because the training from the ABC gets grants. We're not allowed, or sometimes we don't qualify for that. So you would be saving tax dollars because we're self-funded. Community colleges are not free. Somebody's paying them, correct? And that's what they want to promote. Hey, I'm all for it. But we're self-sustained. And that's what people keep forgetting. They want to testify, oh, this is gonna cost us money. No, it's not. You know? You're investing in a different way. We're providing the service that we pay ourselves, you know? And we're the best bang for your buck. Now, I, I respect everybody saying, somebody said responsible bidder. I would like to challenge that. I wanted to see if some of these contractors are using responsible bidders. Because on top of whatever we do, we, we track payroll fraud. And I can guarantee 95% of their project, I'll find it. And in our contractors with self-performing, you won't. That's saving millions of dollars, not 10%. So I'll be cautioned to use some of the words that you're using because we will challenge it and we'll bring it up to light, you know? Home Builders Association, yeah, we can't compete in that market. So I guess we will set aside. Because we can't make a living doing homes. You have to be your own contractor. You know, I want to be an employee. I want to have my benefits, you know? And I don't want to have a 401K that sometimes will tank. My pension is protected. And at least I'll have something that's guaranteed by the federal government. Those are some of those things that you, you have to analyze, you know? And I appreciate your time. I know you have a hard task, but I think you'll do the right thing. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, please ask.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much for coming down.
My name's Felicia Hilton. I'm the political director for the North Central States Regional Council of Carpenters, 10761 Virginia Plaza in Papillion. Just wanted to thank you guys again for taking the time to consider the ordinance. But I just want to stress again what several folks that have spoken in favor of the ordinance is that this ordinance is about workforce development. And everyone is engaged in workforce development when it comes to skilled trades and the apprentice. We have Senator Brent Lindstrom in the, the Revenue Committee and the Unicameral that's running legislative bill 730 that will incentivize contractors that hire apprentices. And they've been on for, I believe, the minimum is seven months. They will receive a thousand dollar tax credit. We have LB 1167 that's being run by Senator Flood, Senator McDonald that will give, I believe, $20 million of the ARPA funds to the DOL to incentivize apprenticeships as well. The DOL is, Senator Morefield has a bill that will also give direct payment to any apprentices from 2019 to 2022 that worked through the pandemic to encourage them to stay in the state and to encourage their continued education. So this isn't something that Omaha has just done on its own. The entire state of Nebraska is focusing on trying to figure out what is the best way to get more young people into skilled trades. The ones that are in it, how do we encourage them to stay and work in the state and continue their, their educational path? And how do we incentivize the contractors that are also using the apprenticeship as a way of training up workers in skilled trades? So this, you guys aren't on an island and you're not reinventing the wheel. This is something the entire state of Nebraska is focused on, including the governor and the city of Omaha. So we're not, we're not asking anybody to step out on a limb here. What we're, what we're asking is that the city of Lincoln also puts skin in the game when it comes to really focusing on workforce development and skilled trades development. Because the one thing we do know is that, you know, people overlook, and I was glad to see you guys recognizing the workers here today for the Mayoral Excellent Award. Because a lot of people ignore the people that take showers after work. They do. And so this is an ordinance that doesn't do that. This is an ordinance that tries to focus on the young men and women that come into the apprenticeship to work with their minds and their hands to better themselves. And the beauty about the apprenticeship program in that it's the DOL certified, which we believe is the gold standard. Now, we're not saying that contractors that have their own training, that we don't know what their training is. But we know that the DOL is the gold standard of training. And any one of these contractors could always join either the, create a DOL certified apprenticeship program or partner up with one that already exists. So this isn't something that they're, they're left out of. They're choosing to not do this. But what we're saying is the DOL certified apprenticeship program is the gold standard. And ABC has a DOL certified apprenticeship program, even though it's grant funded and not self-funded like our program. But they do have one. So they're not excluded from it. And we wouldn't exclude any apprenticeship program that's DOL certified from being part of this ordinance. Because the point is it's about apprenticeships, workforce development, and encouraging young people to earn while they learn and not graduate with college debt and have the skills to be able to work anywhere in the country. But like you heard here, all of these people that spoke that live in Lincoln, they could, they know they can work also anywhere else in the country. Because that's what these skills do. But they choose to stay where they're at. And that's what we want. We want to keep encouraging that. And we just think that the city of Lincoln can also participate in this and join the city of Omaha, the state of Nebraska, as well as the governor in trying to find ways to encourage apprentices to join the trades. And that's what this is about. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thanks so much for coming down.
Good afternoon. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Chairman Bowers, for bringing this important ordinance forward. My name's Ron Kaminski. I am with the Contractors Labor's Training Fund. And I am here in support of this ordinance as written. I would like to thank everybody on this council for not only supporting and trying to protect workers here, but the contractors that play by the rules and the tax dollars that will be coming here from contractors that play by the rules, hiring employees that play by the rules, that pay taxes accordingly. We have an apprenticeship program. We have for years that trains workers all across the state of Nebraska. And every workforce development meeting I am at in the state, in Lincoln, so on, so forth, we hear over and over, how can we train more folks in apprenticeship programs? Myself as president of Building and Trades for half the state and Jamie, president for the other half of the state, we are in complete support of this. And we hope you guys do the right thing in supporting this ordinance as written. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Kaminski? Seeing none. Thanks so much. Is there anyone else that would like to provide a public comment at this time?
Yes, I want to thank you all for listening to both sides of this debate. But when it comes down, my name is Kent Bellamy. I live here in Lincoln. I've been here for 25 years. And I've worked non-union in this state for five years. And then, then the economy sort of went in a trash can. If you remember back when interest rates were 17%. And most of us tradesmen had to pack our bags and leave town. And if you wanted to stay as a carpenter or a union ironworker or electrician or plumber, you went to work somewhere because you had to support your family. And I just happened to decide to move to Colorado at that time, back in the 80s. And I grew up in Beatrice down here. Worked for a non-union contractor, built bridges, built commercial buildings. And a lot of them are still standing today. But it's what's basically what it's come down to. A lot of these guys, they sit here and there, a lot of these are commercial contractors. But you have to decide amongst all of you, and I'm for this because the apprenticeship, what it does, and it's not gonna go away anywhere. A lot of cities have union apprenticeships programs. Electricians do. And you've got a lot of union electricians, plumbers and tenors and everything else right here in this state. But the problem is when you compare the tradesmen, a lot of the tradesmen here in town, they cannot be paid enough to support their families. And they're paying taxes and they're trying to live here and stay here. But a lot of them will leave because they can make better money in other cities. And it's just a better, it's all about money. And it's all about the contractors, you know? The contractors have got to make money, too. And if this, you really concentrate and think about it, if you take a union company, I worked in Colorado for 10 years and built most of those high-rise buildings. I didn't personally do myself because it usually takes about 5,000 guys to build buildings. And it's, it's just, when you have the union contractors, they are all trained, all their men are trained. They can go in there and get the job done quicker. If you have to tomorrow, get that job and say, hey, it has to be done. Let's take, for instance, the South Bypass. How many years is this project? Three years? If that was to go through downtown Denver, that would have been done in eight months. Eight months. You know how much money is saved by using union contractors? I'm not saying these guys are because all we want to do is put an apprenticeship out here. They can choose. These contractors can choose whether they want to be non-union or union. And they can utilize the program. And if they want to have their own union trade, or their own training program, it would be so good, it would help out tremendously. Because untrained people, things happen. And if you look at the accidents, too, compared to a non-union job sites over the country and the union contractors, you'll see that the, the accident rates are so much higher. There's more people killed. And I, I've been on both sides of the fence. I've been 45 years in the trade. And I have never been paid more than the scale that is set aside for that. And now I have a decent pension, a decent pension plan, which they're more than likely not gonna ever have a pension plan for their people unless they choose to take it out of their wages. So you can, you can vote for this or you can vote against it. And it's all in your hands. But the bigger cities that are really got work, it's gotta be done, they're getting work done faster, much faster. It doesn't take them. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for listening to me. I'm for this amendment. And in the long run, it would benefit everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thanks so much for coming down. Is there anyone else that would like to provide comment on this? Anyone else that would like to provide public comment?
Good evening, council members. Todd Wilchin, here representing the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 100. First, I just want to again thank the City Council, especially Chairman Bowers, for your engagement on this ordinance. I know it's very complicated, as many of the issues before you tend to be. But we very much do appreciate you taking the time to pause to collect more information. We very much do appreciate that. The one issue that we still continue to work through as we continue to talk about this is whether or not the creation of a bid preference for apprenticeships through government contracting is, would be appropriate. We still have concerns, though, that, I mean, our primary concern as, as the Chamber of Commerce is that nothing we do places Lincoln businesses at a disadvantage to other firms and other communities. And unfortunately, that's still, well, I know there are several amendments that have been proposed and we appreciate the proposed amendments. Unfortunately, I, I can't stand before you and support this or any other amendments. I mean, which is again, part of the complexities of this and the process. But without, you know, being able to say, hey, you know, this is something that we can get behind. So I, I would just ask, I know it's on the agenda for action. I know that there's gonna be several amendments proposed. There's gonna be a lot of conversations on the dais. And maybe just, I know Chairman Bowers may not appreciate this, but maybe pause it just one additional week just to allow for, you know, no public hearing, no public comment, but for action so that the people that are here or watching online have the opportunity to review the amendments that have been approved and then provide any additional feedback that would benefit the council. And then that way, again, I think the council would be in a better position. I don't think one week would be that harmful. Because again, the concern is, especially for Lincoln businesses, is that they not be at a disadvantage when they are trying to do business with their community. So with that, I would entertain any questions?
Are there any questions? Tom, did you have one?
No, no.
All right. Thanks so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to provide a public comment on this issue? Last call. Anyone who want to provide public comment on this issue? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Sure. Who would you?
Mr. Connolly. So first of-
Chris Connolly, 555 South 10th Street. I think I'm wearing my acting purchasing agent hat for right now. I have my law hat on just for, in my pocket, just in case.
Thank you very much. I know that you were part of the roundtable discussion where we brought in many of the stakeholders that are here today to really get their feedback on the apprentice program, what works, what doesn't work, what makes sense. And, you know, when we looked at it, when I looked at it originally, we had a finance director. And I asked our finance director to take a look at it. And I said, what is a reasonable timeline for the city of Lincoln to staff up or assign it to an existing department? And his recommendation was make it so that it is towards the end of this year, effective January 1st of 2023. And in the meantime, we lost our finance director. We lost our, our purchasing director, HR director that would help us hire all these people. We lost our purchasing director, HR director that would help us hire all these people as, as well as the information services director. So you, as the acting purchasing director, can you tell us a little bit about what you're seeing on the purchasing side? And then where do you envision this would go? Which, which department would it land on for the compliance side? I think purchasing has a really outstanding bid process that they have in place. But that's one component. But who would be tracking the compliance? And who would be doing the enforcement? And tell us, what is the timeline you think is a reasonable timeline to get this implemented and up and running?
In terms of who should be monitoring the compliance, I don't think purchasing is in a position to do that right now. We're already short, not only the purchasing agent, but one assistant purchasing agent. So we're scrambling right now to be able to keep up with the work that's going on. That might get done by project managers. It might get done by someone that's hired. There could be numerous ways to do that other than purchasing. So I think that's, that's one, it may be manageable. In terms of the time to implement it, I haven't really sat down to think about all the steps that would be necessary to do the compliance. Obviously, there's a lot of information that would be, need to be submitted at the time of the bids. And then through the course of the, of the project, would need to have spot checks and verifying payrolls and all those kinds of things. And I have not had an opportunity to sit down with anyone who I think would actually be doing that. Because at the moment, we don't really have anyone to do that. So I think it would take a number of months to adequately put somebody in place to be able to do that kind of compliance work and have an, have an understanding of what needs to be monitored. Having said that, could it be done shorter than, a little bit shorter than that? Maybe. Could it be done, could it take longer? It might take longer too. And I apologize for not giving you a clean answer. But I, I just don't have enough information as to what the steps would be and when, when they would need to be taken. Now, in terms of enforcement, I think whoever is doing this monitoring can work with the law department to determine steps as far as enforcement is concerned. So I think that can be covered as well.
I, I know that I heard one concern in the stakeholder roundtable meeting we had about the Move Lincoln Forward funds from our sales tax collection. And there was a concern on the legal side. So if you could put your legal hat on, talk a little bit about those funds and the language on how those funds can be spent. Say for those bids that come in for the roadwork and projects in the different quadrants of the city. Are those funding amounts permissible to go towards apprentice programs? Or what is, what are the prohibitions, the legal language, if you know that?
Just so I understand, want to make sure I understand your question. In terms of the monies that would be spent on these various projects?
That are approved by the task force that reviews projects in each one of the quadrants.
For Lincoln on the Move.
Lincoln on the Move.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, and so the question is, how would Lincoln on the Move be affected by this?
Right, and if the language that people voted for would permit the funds from Lincoln on the Move to be directed towards anything other than the various categories that were clearly spelled out on what people voted on?
Since those would all be local tax dollars, I, I would want to confirm this and study it a little bit more. But I believe that those funds could be used for Lincoln on the Move. I don't know that it's prohibited in any way, shape, or form. Especially since it does not have, it's not going to have any state or federal monies tied to it. It's, it's a little cleaner element.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, do you have that? Excuse me, do you have that in front of you? Do you have the?
The ordinance?
The ordinance.
Yes, I do.
Page one, line 20, talks about the word contract.
Right.
And it says, "Any contract the city is committed to expend or expend its funds, including funds received from other government agencies in return for work, labor, financial services, technical services, professional services, supplies or whatever." Goes on to few, combination of the foregoing. Are you saying that it, anything that uses federal funds, gas tax funds, and those would all be subject to this or not? Because in another line, it says something to the contrary.
Yeah, you have, you have the word contract. And it says, "When the word contract is used herein," then it would include projects, if, if the word contract is used. It would include projects that could include state and federal monies as well. If that's the word that's used. As I was digging further into this, you also though have the, the term "construction project." This is on page three, line one. It goes on to say, "Means any project to be paid for by the city, but which is not funded in whole or in part by any federal, state funds to construct, rehabilitate, et cetera." So when you skip down then to number two on line 13 of page three, "The apprenticeship utilization bid incentive shall apply to construction projects," I assume that was meant to be plural, "advertised after the effective date of the ordinance with an estimated value in excess of $250,000." So under that reading and looking at, I think, construction projects, as long as that term is what's being used, would not, it would not include the federal or state component. In other words, it wouldn't be built. It's not going to be included as part of the calculation.
Okay, so you're saying if it's a construction project that's using federal, state, or other funds other than city funds, they would not be held to this ordinance of having a 5% or the contract bids?
The way I'm, yeah, I guess the way I'm reading "construction project" is, again, it was, it's a project paid for by the city, but not funded in whole or in part by any state or federal funds. So it can't include those, it would not include state or federal funds in the, in the contract.
Okay. It also says on page three, line four, well, that whole, that whole paragraph, if that's what you're working for, is the "construction project definition," right?
That's the definition of "construction project."
Which are streets, other improvements, real property, portion of any of the same, belonging to the city within its geographical boundaries. So that's within the city limits.
Correct.
So anything spent outside of the city limits would not also be part of this ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Councilman, uh, Councilman Choob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Connolly, thanks for coming forward. I am going to ask you to wear both hats, the legal hat. And I wrote down some questions because I'm not going to remember them. Let's start with, the first few lines of this seven-page document, it's only seven pages, mostly definitions, so we can understand the words between contracts and projects, so we can all agree on what those things mean.
Right.
But the first few lines say, incorporate a bid incentive for apprenticeship utilization. So this is basically an attempt by the city, um, this is a yes or no question. Attempt by the city to incentivize the use of apprenticeships by giving a bid incentive. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Are we requiring employers to have an apprenticeship program in order to submit a bid to the city?
No.
So we're not reducing. Are we, the city itself, establishing an apprenticeship program?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, I don't think this says anything about that in the document.
Correct.
Are these, I believe something, the contract word. These are all city contracts and that doesn't affect the private sector in any way, does it?
No.
No. So, and there's a line in here I really like, and I can't find it at the moment, where it says, comma, "For evaluation purposes only." Did you see, did you, do you remember reading that?
I, I do.
So that would suggest to me that this doesn't change the price of the bid or the contract. This is only part of the evaluation of the contract to give it some credit. Would that be?
That's correct. There are four scenarios that I can think of involving the incentive. One would be where all of the bids that come in, all are claiming the incentive or the preference. Okay, and in that situation, it won't make any difference, right?
Won't make any difference.
They, whoever is the lowest bid would get it.
Playfield's been re-leveled because everyone had a program.
Correct. The second circumstance would be where no one has, is claiming the incentive or the preference. In which case-
Doesn't matter at all. Yep.
Third situation would be where the lowest bid of the bids that come in is already claiming, is the only one claiming the preference. And would then-
Get a double.
It wouldn't make any difference there either, right? Won't have any impact. So the fourth one is the one that could have some impact. And that's where the lowest bid, without claiming the incentive, is at one level. And I'll, I'll use an example of a million dollars. So at a million dollars, that's the low bid and they're not claiming the incentive. The next lowest bid is $1,050,000, okay? And at $1,050,000, if you take 5% of that bid, I think it's like $55,000 or $52,000, gets it just below the million-dollar threshold of the first bid that had, did not have the-
The bid, yeah, the program.
For evaluation purposes, we would lower that to $997,000, whatever it was. And that bid would then, if nothing else changed, that would be the winning bid. The city though, would not pay $997,000 for the project. It would pay $1,050,000 for the project. So that's, that's the fourth scenario. There may be others, those are the ones that I, that I was able to come up with.
So last question, thank you, Mr. Chair. How often does the city award bids that are below the project price? Say, are, we estimate the project's going to cost a million dollars. All the bids come in at $199,000. Do we award those contracts?
Well, we, we awarded to the lowest bidder. I mean-
Even, even if it's under our project cost? Would, would we take, no incentive at all? We would take a project that would lose, that we'd have to pay a difference on? Or do we rebid those and recalculate those?
I mean, there's, there's a case, the rule is, we, we award to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder.
Responsible bidder.
There are occasions when somebody gives us a ridiculously low bid because they messed up somewhere on their calculations, probably. And while you could try and force them to accept that bid and force them to, to pay this ridiculously low amount, a lot of times we'll call that either not responsive or not responsible. And so we don't count those situations. And so we would go to the second bid under those circumstances. But otherwise, if, if everyone is within the ballpark, we're always going to go with the lowest responsive, responsible bid.
I appreciate that. I'm going to belabor it just a little longer. So I'm, what I'm, what I've heard from lots of people is that if it comes in much under the project, the city pays the difference. And I'm saying that, why would the city engage in a contract where we're going to lose money?
Yeah, and, and again, it depends on, on the circumstances. But if that 5% is enough to get it below the, the bid that was, that didn't have the incentive, that's the situation where the city would be paying more than it, it could otherwise under, under a different circumstance. And it could be, of course, there could be other circumstances where the 5% is not enough to get it below the low bid anyway. In which case, that, that million-dollar bid in that circumstance would still be the winning bid.
So I'm going to wrap it up on this. And so I've heard from people that the city will give away money because we'll take the lowest bid. That is not outside the possibilities, but it probably, it could or could not happen.
Yes.
There's no absolute in that.
There's some variables there.
There's no absolute in that.
And there's no absolutes, but there are situations where the city could pay more on a particular contract than what the original lowest bid was. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilman Washington?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Connolly, as an acting purchasing agent, I have a couple of questions for you. All right. We've had discussions about the original proposal at $250,000 threshold. And we've had conversations about raising that to $500,000. And I would like to know, how many contracts does the city of Lincoln issue at $500,000 and above that don't, that fall within this thing? So it doesn't involve state or federal, right?
Okay.
So let's take out state and federal funds and say, you know, what's, and if you can only estimate a range, if you would give me a range.
In terms of the, in terms of the, with that last qualification that you had with no federal or state funding, that makes it more difficult for me.
Okay.
What I can tell you is that in, in the 20, fiscal year '20 to '21,
Okay.
there were 55 contracts that were awarded that were over $500,000. Now, again, to have that further breakdown of, you know, how many of those had state and federal money, I, I don't have that information here. We can get that though.
All right, thank you. I think that's, I'm going to hold, I'm going to stop.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thanks so much. Is there any other staff that any council members would like to speak with? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Next to you, the item?
Uh, no, we are going to move into the voting session for this. And as soon as our city clerk reads it off, I'm going to pass the gavel over to Vice Chair Ward so I can participate. Thank you.
Item 5A is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 2.18 Purchasing Division by adding a new section number 2.18.034, entitled Contractor Provisions to Incorporate a Bid Incentive for Apprentice Utilization, introduced by McGinnis.
So move, second.
Chairman Bowers, would you like to, Chairman Bowers, would you like to open on your ordinance?
Yes, please. Thank you, Councilman Ward. The workforce shortage is a major challenge to Nebraska business and government projects. A part of the solution to this challenge is to promote apprenticeship programs that train workers in skills such as electrical, plumbing, and others. The Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act Local Plan prioritizes apprenticeship programs as part of our comprehensive workforce development initiatives. Our city currently is lacking in this opportunity for my generation and the next generation of skilled workers. This ordinance uses a definition of apprentice that requires the Department of Labor registration and/or sponsorship, meaning that they combine paid-on-the-job training with classroom instruction to prepare workers for highly skilled careers. And after completion of the apprenticeship, they earn a national credential that certifies their skill level for current and future employers. The ordinance, this ordinance allows for a bidding incentive to recognize such wage and job training contributions of a bidder participating in an apprenticeship program as one of the review criteria, along with criterias such as cost and experience. Apprenticeship program sponsors can be employers, employer associations, or labor unions. The goal of this ordinance is to support apprenticeship training programs and recognize the contributions of employers who participate in these programs as one of many factors in considering contract awards. Lincoln is in a construction boom. Lincoln has passed the billion-dollar mark for annual construction permits. We are a pro-growth city that has approved and appropriated significant funding to growth and development. This ordinance does not mandate that anyone become a registered apprenticeship program. Over the past several months, the council and the community have worked to tweak this ordinance. I do want to thank everyone who provided public comment, wrote in letters, and participated in the process to change this ordinance. And I want to address a few things. No one will be forced to create, implement, or participate in an apprenticeship program. An apprenticeship program does not mean a group of workers that are unionized. An apprenticeship can be a union or employer or employer association sponsored. This is not reinventing the wheel. Omaha has passed this. We were able to learn from their unanimous council vote that passed this ordinance and learned from their department that implements this and said that it is not as scary as what some people believe it to be. We've been working on this issue for several months. And to continue a delay, I believe, would be an attempt to let this die in process. Hard work has gone into this, into developing a compromise that everyone has asked for. When this was first introduced, people said that this is going to go only towards union shops. It stated that, no, that's not accurate. And that it has to be a Department of Labor Registered Apprenticeship Program. Then the conversation turned into, we need to include community colleges. Once that came through, I feel like we're continuing to try to move the goalpost on this issue. I'm thankful for the leaders who have worked together to have a discussion in good faith and open minds to find a solution to address our shortage of skilled workers in developing the next generation.
Thank you, Chairman Bowers. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Councilwoman Rabel, do you are recognized?
I'd like to make a motion for some of the amendments that are out there. I'd like, first of all, let's see. I had done one complete motion to amend, but Councilwoman Washington did a better job and she separated out all the issues. And so I'd like to make a motion to amend- And so, I'd like to make a motion to amend number two.
And what is that amendment, Councilwoman?
It is one of the elements that we discussed in, in our, our stakeholder group. And it's what the city of Omaha had done, going, raising the amount from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, very good. And I believe we have a second?
Throughout the document.
We have a second from Councilwoman Washington. Is there discussion?
Yes, you know.
Continue.
First of all, thank you to so many of you who took time off from work to come down to Lincoln to share with us how proud you are of those apprentice programs that you sponsor. I wanna thank the folks in Lincoln who are equally proud of the apprentice programs that they currently have. I also wanna thank the Associated Builders and Contractors and Associated General Contractors who also shared with us how proud they are of the programs that they offer in training apprentices. We all are very supportive of apprentice incentive programs. I think it's, it's an important thing for all of us to recognize. We have a workforce shortage that's gone on. One gentleman said, during the recession, we lost so many amazing tradespeople because they had to find work elsewhere. We have to build up somewhere. We need more people in our state. We need to encourage people to embrace the trades. It's a wonderful, uh, uh, industry where you can raise a family and you can provide for a family. So, this motion to amend is trying to mirror up what the city of Omaha did. You know, they had a program out there trying to create equity in, in the workforce. They had launched it ten years ago, and then, as a subsequent initiative, they wanted to really encourage apprentice programs. They started out with two hundred and fifty thousand, and they realized that the, the cost of construction materials and the projects themselves, it made more sense to set that threshold at five hundred thousand. And so, I'm hoping my colleagues will concur that that seems a reasonable amount to set the threshold at for the city of Lincoln as well.
Any discussion on Councilwoman Raybold's amendment to raise the threshold? Councilman Bowers?
You know, I appreciate the work that's gone into this also. I do believe that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is more appropriate for Lincoln. But what I will say is that we have attempted to have a conversation in good faith. This is one of the compromises that was made to increase this to five hundred thousand dollars. So, I'm gonna hold up my end of the good faith discussion, and I hope other council members do as well.
Thank you, Councilman Bowers. Is there any other discussion on the Raybold amendment? Okay, let's vote on this. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please, on Councilwoman Raybold's amendment to change the threshold from two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, and I'll read the motion to amend.
Thank you.
Number two into the record before I call the vote. Motion to amend number two is to amend Bill number twenty-one, one seventy-two as follows. Page one, line nine, strike two hundred and fifty thousand and insert five hundred thousand. Page one, line fifteen, strike two hundred and fifty thousand and insert five hundred thousand. Page three, line fifteen, strike two fifty thousand and insert five hundred thousand. Page four, line twenty-five, strike two hundred and fifty thousand and insert five hundred thousand. On page five, line five, strike two hundred and fifty thousand and insert five hundred thousand. The request was to change threshold from two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
I'd like, you're recognized, Councilwoman Raybold?
I'd like to make a motion to amend number three.
Second.
And again, in our discussion at, with the stakeholders, really trying to mirror the language in Omaha, in Omaha, they had included Metro Community College or other similar institution. Certainly, we had representatives from Associated Builders and Contractors. They were very adamant that their programs, their apprentice training programs should be recognized as well. I know that they are recognized by the Nebraska Department of Labor and I believe the U.S. Department of Labor as well. So, the amendment almost mirrors Omaha, with the exception of, we changed Metro Community College to Southeast Community College, and a recent addition was including Associated Builders and Contractors, Inc.
For?
Or other similar institution, which is the language in, in Omaha as well. I know that gave some of us consternation about including them in this motion to amend, and I'm certainly would like to hear my, my colleagues' thoughts on that as well.
Is there discussion on Councilwoman Raybold's amendment number three? Councilwoman Bowers, you are recognized.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to amend Councilwoman Raybold's amendment, so Associated Building and Contractors, Inc. would be removed.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Shob. Uh, thank you, Councilman Ward, and, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Raybold, for starting this discussion. Uh, as we began this process, on working on this ord, ordinance, one of the biggest requests from contractors was to amend this ordinance to include community colleges. This amendment will match what Omaha has in their ordinance and to further reach the goal of more apprenticeship programs in Lincoln. Conversations in good faith led to this amendment, and I was surprised to see the extra language added that was not included in Omaha. This was created out of way to reach compromise and was surprised to see it on. There are multiple associations industry-wide that would meet the requirement of Associated Building and Contractors, Inc. or similar institutions. This would essentially lead to all contractors receiving the five percent evaluation incentive. This would not only negate the purpose of this ordinance, but would lead to an increase in costs. This motion meets one of the biggest requests from the community, matches Omaha language, tailors this ordinance to save costs, and meets the goal of this ordinance, and that is why I am amending it to, uh, say, administrated by Southeast Community College or similar institutions.
Thank you, Chairman Bowers. Is there any other discussion on Councilman Bowers' amendment to Councilwoman Raybold, Councilwoman Raybold's amendment, motion to amend number three?
Can I just?
Yes, Councilwoman Raybold.
Well, in an effort to, to come up with compromises, we worked with and reached out to both sides of the issue, and in order to reach a compromise, you have to listen to the other side of the issue as well. I think Omaha has a wonderful template. It has been successful. We know what we're gonna be doing, and Lincoln will be as equally successful. But I thought, since that was a, a concern from someone representing a little bit different point of view, I thought it should be incorporated and considered.
Yes, Councilman?
You know, I, um, we say that Omaha has a good template, but then we try to expand it out here. I really wanna avoid getting into a huge back and forth, but if Associated Builders and Contractors has a registered apprenticeship program, then they would already qualify based on the language that's in the, in the original amendment.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Vice Chair Ward. Um, I just wanna, I wanna be really clear about this, because I think it's really important. I think one of the things that I've heard the most was that we really wanna make certain that we're not disenfranchising Lincoln-based businesses who have accredited, I'm gonna change the words, accredited apprentice or training programs that are registered with either the state or the United States Department of Labor. And so, by, I wanna ask a clarification. You are suggesting we strike just the words, Associated Builders and Contractors, Inc., because they are already a registered, um, they already have a registered apprentice program with the Department of Labor?
Yes, um, removing those words because that is the compromise that was made, and saying that including community colleges or similar institutions is not a compromise, I think, um, paints the whole process that got to this end result in an unfortunate light. So, uh, removing those words, um, I am making that motion for because that is the compromise that we had made.
Is there any other discussion on Councilman Bowers' amendment? Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, I'd like to call up our attorney on this one, 'cause the way I read this, if we strike out the Associated Builders and Contractors, then the other similar institutions would be only Southeast Community College, and it wouldn't be other programs that have accredited bases and those type of things, because we'd only be talking about similar institutions being like Southeast Community College. 'Cause I think the intent was similar institutions were to be other programs that are accredited like the Associated Builders and Contractors.
Uh, yeah, I guess if you're asking me, if, if the term or other similar institution is removed as part of the amendment, then yes, Southeast Community College is the only other one that would be.
No, we're gonna remove the Associated Builders and Contractors, period, comma.
Correct.
So, we remove that. So, it reads now, program administered by Southeast Community College or similar institution. So, the similar institutions are now like Southeast Community College. They're not like the Associated Builders and Contractors.
That'd be a point of discussion. I mean, uh, what are the similar institutions?
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking him first.
Okay.
And then, you need to be recognized.
Okay.
I'm taking lessons from Jane. I'm taking lessons from Jane.
Right.
Um, in, in terms of what other similar institution means, it's a little unclear to us right now.
Okay.
Okay? And, and so, whether, whether Associated Builders and Contractors is in there or not, I don't, I don't know that that affects, or that's not gonna create any additional questions. But the term, where other similar institution does create some, uh, questions as to exactly how does, what qualifies as a similar institution? And we, I mean, certainly other community colleges could. Is that all there is? I don't know. And that's, that's what we would need to look at.
Okay. That was my question. And we'll add another follow-up.
Are there, yes, Councilwoman Raybold?
And, and it's hard to figure out, what did Omaha intend? I don't know. Did they mean other similar institutions to Metro Community College? Or did they mean other accredited apprentice programs like what Metro Community College offers? So, I think it's, it's sort of up, up to their interpretation, but from what I heard from the, the folks who came down from Omaha to explain it, they, I felt that they were saying they wanted just a little bit of flexibility to review each one of those programs individually to make sure that it was in the true spirit as an apprentice incentive program or apprentice program. Uh, in many cases, it is already certified by the Nebraska Department of Labor or the U.S. Department of Labor. That's.
Are there any other comments or questions? Councilman Bowers?
Yeah, so, when we say that it's already certified that by the Department of Labor, then it is already in this ordinance. Um, how Omaha interpreted South, or Metro Community College or similar institutions were other types of colleges like, um, the university. So, it keeps it limited to similar institutions similar to the community college, not, um, opening it up to any, uh, training program.
Any other comments from the council? Councilman McGinnis?
My only thought on this is I've been involved with workforce development, it seems like, for the last twenty years, and every contractor, everybody in town has been trying to get contractors or people to come in and get involved, and they have all kinda done different programs to do that. I was involved with the TCA or the, the Career Academy, and I was one of them to start trying to do this. And that was brought forward by a friend of mine, Joe Hampton. He worked hard for years and years to get more people into the trades. That was his kinda goal in life, is to work people to get into the trades, and everybody did a little bit differently. So, I think of our goal as to work on getting people into the trades. We need to leave it open to certain groups that are spending a lot of time and effort to get these people into the trades. But that's my thought.
Any other comments? Councilman? Okay, Councilwoman Washington, then Councilman Beckius?
Thank you. Um, I think it's really important that we not narrow the subset of, uh, training and apprenticeship programs that qualify. If the, the second, um, section, subsection B, so that the term, so I'm gonna read the whole thing. If the term apprentice means someone who is in a sponsored union apprentice program or in a training program that is recognized by the Nebraska Department of Labor, or someone who is in a training program offered by Southeast Community College or some other similar institution, if that covers the local businesses who have developed the training programs, as Councilwoman McGinnis has said, I would be fine with striking those words, but it is really important that we're not narrowing the subset so that we reduce, again, the number of companies that qualify.
Councilman Beckius, you are recognized.
Thank you. Um, the only statement that I would make is, um, you know, I worry about city staff being able to interpret what that means, and I'm a little concerned about, um, giving preference to programs that may not be up to snuff. And at the end of the day, um, I also don't wanna dedicate additional city resources to try to discover which one of these programs are up to snuff. We have a standard in the state of Nebraska. Uh, it's administered by the Department of Labor. That standard is used throughout our state in many different ways to make determinations as to which programs are sufficient and which programs are not sufficient. Um, and I recognize the compromise that is trying to be had by recognizing Southeast Community Colleges, Southeast Community College as an approved provider. But at some point, you know, I want to protect the intent of this resolution in that, so much so that all the providers are, are, are providers that are, um, being recognized in this program and not just anyone who provides a program of any way, shape, or form.
Any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Washington?
I'm in agreement that the city of Lincoln should not be the people saying who's got the accredited program, that that really does need to reside with the state of Nebraska because they have the mechanism in place. I'm in agreement with Mr. Beckius.
We have, if there are no further comments, we have two amendments with seconds on the floor to be voted on. Um, Madam Clerk, are we ready to, thank you, Mr. Connolly. Are we ready to vote on these two amendments? The first is Councilwoman Raybold's to increase the threshold with our, which our clerk has read into the record, and then Councilman Bowers? Oh, we did, that's right.
Did already vote.
How soon we forget?
We have.
Right. We're current. We did. Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Well, let's clarify. It's, uh, Councilwoman Bowers put an amendment to strike Associated Builders and Contractors, Inc. from.
Madam, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, could you read it? I, thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Raybold, we'll have Madam Clerk. Could you read it, please? Thank you.
What's, what we are discussing at this moment is Councilwoman Bowers' amendment to the original motion to amendment number three, which will then read on page two, line nineteen, will insert the word "or" before the letter "B," and on page two, it shall read now, on page two, lines, line twenty-one, strike the period, insert the following language after labor, or enrolled in or has graduated in the last two years from a construction training program administered by Southeast Community, Community College. We will strike Associated Builders and Contractors, Inc., and keep or other similar institution.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to two. Let's move on. Councilwoman Raybold?
I think we're ready to vote on the motion to amend number three with the stricken language.
Okay, I thought you had another amendment.
No, we're still on this one.
You did not, okay.
We're still on this one.
Okay. Let's move forward, Madam Clerk.
I just have one point of discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chairman Bowers?
Yes. Um, you know, uh, the Department of Labor has the mechanisms in place, has the gold standard. Um, I think that, um, we are staying more true to the ordinance if we had only left registered apprenticeship programs. And, um, I voted for the community college because of our conversations in good faith, um, and that's why, um, I voted that way, um, and. our conversations in good faith. And that's why I voted that way. And I was surprised that there was extra language added on. But since we are back to what our conversation in good faith led to, I will vote for this amendment.
Okay. Let's proceed. Any other discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please read?
Yep.
Into what we are, our next vote. Back to the main motion, please. Okay? McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Okay, yes. We'll move on. Councilwoman Raybold, you are recognized.
I'd like to make a motion to amend number four.
Second.
And basically, it's, it's pushing out the timeline from an earlier rendition after different conversations with a number of people and the loss of additional critical city staff, retiring or otherwise. It just includes inserting January 1st, 2023, to when this takes force, as well as commencing enforcement of it, January 1st, 2023.
Is there discussion on Councilwoman Raybold's proposed amendment? Councilman Bowers?
I'll be making a motion to amend Councilwoman Raybold's amendment to delay the apprentice incentive only in proceeding with the rest of the contractor provision portion of the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Councilman Bowers?
Thank you, Councilman Shob. Thank you, Councilwoman Ward. And again, thank you, Councilwoman Raybold, for starting this conversation. Again, as we began the process of the ordinance, the second request from the community was to delay the implementation of the apprenticeship incentive to allow time for companies to develop an apprenticeship program if they choose, and if they choose to work with the Nebraska Department of Labor or the U.S. Department of Labor. Through our conversations in good faith, I was surprised to see a delay on the entire ordinance and not only the apprenticeship incentive. The contract provisions seek to help and protect contractors who play by the rules and protect workers. And some of these provisions are already included in our contracts, but this codifies our responsibility.
Is there discussion on Councilman Bowers' amendment to Councilwoman Raybold's? Yes, Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Vice Chair Ward. Changing, adding an amendment to this by dividing the, the date of when this bill goes into place is confusing to me. It seems like it takes the focus away from the apprenticeship program and moves it into other contracts, other contracted kinds of things. And, and if you'd like to move a motion specifically on the requirement for workman's comp, I'd like to see that in a separate motion. I see this as connected to the original ordinance, and I would like to keep them together. I don't see how moving one part of it forward when we leave the rest of it for later is efficient or really takes into consideration the fact that we have some staffing issues in the city department. It's not that it's a bad thing. People are allowed to retire. I'm not suggesting they can't. But until we are fully staffed and procurement, I don't see a reason to divide the enactment date of this ordinance.
Other discussion? Councilwoman Raybold and Councilman Bowers?
I'm hoping Councilman Bowers can clarify exactly which, which of the two dates he wants changed. And is it the one on page five, or is it the one on page six? Because you...
Councilman Bowers, you're recognized. You had your hand up prior.
Yes. I spoke with Mr. Christie about what the language would look like for this. Essentially, the heart of what I'm getting to is that we would move forward with the workers' compensation insurance in place for its employees on section five, a contractual provision requiring the contractor comply with the Nebraska Employee Classification Act, a provision requiring the contractor provide a list of subcontractors who are providing work, and a requirement that all employees are paid through direct deposit or check and a record of payments with detailed withholdings as retained. So essentially, the heart of it is on page five with the definitions on the other pages. So we would only be delaying the apprenticeship incentive part of it only.
Well, it's confusing because...
I'm sorry. Councilman Beckius had his hand up. And then Councilwoman Raybold, thank you.
Just a question for, for Councilman Bowers. Could you please refer to page four? Bid submission requirements. Is it your intention to include the work, that section as well, starting with line 24, 25, and then going on to page five, lines 1, 2, 3, to require bidders to have workers' compensation?
So if I'm reading what you're saying, you're talking about the failure to comply with apprentice utilization requirements is evidence-bearing on a contractor's qualification for future contracts? What number?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Page four, line 24?
Page four, line 24, section C, bid submission requirements. I can read it to you if that'd be helpful.
Oh, you're...
All bid specifications for contracts in excess of $250,000 shall include a requirement that the bidder has, one, workers' compensation insurance in place for its employees. At the time that the bid is submitted, the bidder must submit proof that workers' compensation insurance is in place for its employees.
Yeah. So your question is, is my intention to move forward with that portion?
Yes, because the way that I just understood you stating was that you were just speaking to the contract requirements listed below that point in time.
Uh, it would be the, like I said, the heart of what I'm getting to is all of page five, workers' compensation in place for its employees. And I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to clarify that, that at the time that the bid is submitted, the bidder must submit proof that workers' compensation is in place for its employees, and then the rest of the contract requirements. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to clarify what my intention was.
Councilman Raybold, then Councilman Shob. Did that. Councilman Beckius, I'm sorry. Are you done?
Yes, I am finished. Thank you.
So you're saying the date on page five should be what?
Uh, that it moves, that there is not a delay, that we move forward as traditional ordinances move forward.
Up on sign, when signed. Correct.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to ask, the way it's written is reports of non-compliance by... What's the date, though?
If I may, typically it's up on signature. Once it's, any ordinance is passed, then we send it up to the, the office for signature.
So what is the amendment to say? That's, I, I think it's just a little too vague for me. And then, again, going back, the apprentice program then commences January 1st, 2023?
Correct. The apprentice program incentive would commence on that date, but the rest of it would be traditional, there would not be a delay.
So basically, you're just wanting to make sure that the contractor provisions on any contracts have to be in compliance with the items on page five, 1, 2, 3, and 4, under contract requirements.
And also including the section above there requiring workers' comp. All right, excuse me.
Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is everyone, I'd like to have Mr. Connolly come up and help me with a little bit of these things. Mr. Connolly, thank you for, so I listened to my colleagues talk about something, and I want to take us up to a higher level. This is only for people who request the bid incentive consideration, right?
That is correct. Those are the ones that would, that we would require and need to do the compliance.
If no one between now and January 1st, 2023 asks for the bidding consideration, this wouldn't really matter.
If, if none are successful, correct. If somebody, if a bid is awarded that has the incentive in it, then yes, we would need to start that.
Then we start doing the checks to make sure they comply with everything else.
Correct.
Immediately? Is that true?
Well, with the next contract that we put out for bid, and it goes through the bid process, and it gets evaluated, and we say, okay, you won the incentive, then we start checking to make sure they've reached all the requirements that are outlined in these seven pages.
No. The, the intention and how it's written, similar to what Omaha has, is that this would apply to all contractors who have a contract in excess of $500,000. So all contractors in excess of $500,000 would have the workers' comp, direct deposit, paycheck, subcontractor list.
Bid incentive or not?
Correct.
But the only difference...
Councilwoman Raybold?
But the only difference is that Omaha had an opportunity to ramp up their apprentice program and incorporate all their probably standard guidelines in their bid process. And I'd have to defer to our purchasing director. Are these just our standard current language that we have in, in all of contracts that come before the city? And maybe we're overthinking this.
Workers' comp is required by state law, and we, we do that as a matter of, a standard procedure for us to make sure that they have it and that we're, they have to provide a certificate of it. We do require in all the contracts that they're complying with the Employee Classification Act. We do require that they provide us a list of all subcontractors, and that they provide us updated lists when work is, is occurring. The only thing that we do not do at this time, I don't believe, is a requirement that employees are paid by direct deposit.
So in our current bids, you don't require that, that employees are paid via direct deposit or check? Do you require a record of payments with detailed withholdings?
We do require, we do require a record of payments with detailed withholdings. And I think the only thing that we don't require is the direct deposit. Certainly, they can be paid by check. And they certainly are allowed, they're certainly allowed to do direct deposits. It's just, I don't, I don't, I don't recall that we have made that a requirement.
Well, it, it says or check.
Correct.
It just still gives you that option to pay.
That is correct.
Or check.
Mr. McGinnis, and then Ms. Council, Beckius after Councilman McGinnis. Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Well, yeah, that was going to be part of my question, so thank you on that. But another part of this is, was the question, is these are things that we're enforcing already. Isn't that correct?
Except for the direct deposit, yes.
And except for now the director of this program will be the one to be responsible for enforcing this?
That's to be, to be...
As the director of the department will, shall be the one responsible for enforcing this.
Then that would be correct, yes.
So whoever is that will be the one instead of, but as of now, we require all these already. And so...
Yes, they, they do show up in, in all of our contracts.
Okay.
Councilman, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, other than the direct deposit.
Okay. Mr. Our Councilman Beckius?
So, Mr. Connolly, is it fair to say then we're simply putting practice into code as to what's occurring already today?
That's correct. And is already required, some of this is already required by state law.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilman Bowers?
Yeah, I would like to refer everyone back to my opening statement where, my ending statement on that was, some of these provisions are already included in our contracts, but this codifies the responsibility.
Any other discussion or comments or questions for Mr. Connolly? Councilman Beckius, then Councilman...
I'm sorry, not for Mr. Connolly. I apologize.
Okay. And for, or for Mr. Connolly? While he's there. Councilwoman Raybold?
I just want clarification how that last line on page five, on line 22 and 23 reads. If you just clarify that so I understand how it is to read from what we have before us. That's...
I guess I'm confused where you're confused about. The city shall develop procedures for compliance review or general contractor documentation, procedures for remedying compliance issues, and procedures for addressing reports of non-compliance. And then we would just take out by January?
I don't think we're reading from the same...
I don't think we're reading from...
No, we're not.
There. You move it up and down. She's talking penalties for non-compliance? Is that what you're...
No, it's on page five. The city shall have the right to inspect contractors' records as needed in order to confirm compliance with this section of this code. The city shall develop procedures for compliance review of general contractor documentation, procedures for remedying compliance issues, and procedures for addressing reports of non-compliance.
Yeah, we're reading this same, same.
But then I, I gave them the lead time to January 1st of 2023 as it relates to the apprentice incentive.
Would you like me to read the motion to amend number four?
Sure. Please go ahead, Madam Clerk.
So the original motion to amend number four states that we are to amend bill number 21172 as follows. On page five, line 20, strike the period and insert by January 1st, 2023, period.
Thank you.
On page six, lines 19 through 20, strike the words, "from and after its passage and publication or after its posting and notice of such posting given by publication as herein and in the city charter provided," and insert commencing January 1st, 2023. That was the original motion that was introduced by Raybold.
So it should just say, this ordinance shall take effect and be in force commencing January 1st, 2023?
I wonder if it might be, to clear up the confusion, if we, again, my law degree comes from Wikipedia, so bear with me here, if we removed the dates and then on the last page, section two, page six, on the paper copy says, this ordinance shall take effect as normal, except for the apprenticeship incentive.
I'm sorry, except for the...
What?
Apprenticeship incentive. And that way, the apprenticeship incentive goes with your date. Trying to help you out here. I'm trying to figure out what the, what, I'm trying to figure out what your hiccup is.
Well, I thought the focus should be on the apprentice incentive programs, not on some of the other components of bids.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. I, I just have to, I'm uncomfortable with changing the last page, the signature page of our ordinances by giving it two boxes for when things are enacted. I think it's really important that we, we work through this within the text of the document. If we, if, and I'm not saying I'm in favor, but if, what you really want to do is enact one portion of this ordinance at a different time than another portion, we need to be crystal clear, and it needs to be within the text of that section or subsection. And I'm not an attorney, and I don't even read Wikipedia that often. So I'm going to turn to our council and ask you, what is your advice for how we split enactment?
What I can tell you is that it was my plan to, once we finish this, craft something to fit the intent. So I think there are, I mean, I can think of several ways to do it, but what we would do is we would craft something based upon the motion that was made today and the intent that was expressed. Quite frankly, we have done that before, where motions have been made, and then we've gone back and listened to it, the hearings, and crafted a motion to, to fit the intent. So again, I do think there are at least a couple of different ways we could do that.
Mr. Christie, could we vote on the two amendments that we have on the floor?
Yes.
So we could proceed with the vote, based on that. Yes. Councilman Beckius?
Thank you. Mr. Christie, if given the opportunity to have 10 minutes of time, would you and Mr. Connolly and Mr. Bowers be able to work out something that is a little bit more written?
Yes.
I would like to suggest that to my council members, that we may take a 10-minute break.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, Councilman Bowers?
I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I appreciate where you're coming from. But we do have a precedent of this, of stating what our intention is and taking this vote, and our attorneys drafting up. I mean, I feel like the motion's pretty clear that the entire ordinance moves forward except for the incentive on the apprenticeship.
Anyone else? I guess, just not in my presiding mode, but I'd rather vote than leave those hanging out during a break. But yes, Councilwoman Raybold?
So when does the apprentice incentive element get considered for bid evaluation?
The date you have down.
January 1st, 2023?
That is correct.
Okay. I, I thought you were, wanted both parts to be changed. And you said it goes into effect immediately. Boom.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving, okay.
Councilman Bowers, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ward. I'm not, I'm not sure how to say it clear. The apprenticeship incentive portion of it is the only portion that gets delayed until January 21st. Everything else takes place or moves forward as normal.
Councilman Beckius?
Thank you. Thank you. It seems like there is a bit of confusion. While I understand that this body sometimes will make motions from the dais, I don't think it's preferable. And I would much rather have some sort of firm understanding in writing that this body can vote on as opposed to a verbal reconstitution of what people are trying to effectually communicate with each other. I'm not personally a big fan of of not having a motion to amend in front of me prior to coming to this body. I recognize that other folks may be fine with that. I don't appreciate it. I would prefer to take a 15-minute recess, have city law work with Mr. Bowers to figure this out so we have some sort of written form. I would move to take a 15-minute recess.
I will second that.
Could we call the vote, please, on a 15-minute recess? Is there any other discussion before we vote on a 15-minute recess? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Becky, yes?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Motion carried for three.
So put us in recess.
All right, the council is back in session. Madam Clerk, would you let us know where we are at this point, please? Thank you. Whoa. Whoa. Sorry. I'm going to do it one more time. Okay, I like that. I know, I should not have been on the other. I need a new gavel. No, I'm kidding. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we're on section five, ordinances third reading related resolutions on item 5A. We are on the motion to amend number four that was originally introduced by Raybold, but then was amended by Councilman Bowers. So we're on that current amendment.
Okay, is there any continued discussion? I know Councilman, I was just going to say Councilman Bowers worked over the break. I know Councilman, I was just gonna say Councilman Bowers worked over the break, but Councilman, do you wanna go first as introducer, Councilman Bowers? And say where you're at, or?
Well, I, I just wanna echo the concerns that we heard earlier before we took a break. I think it's important, and I know you had pointed out that I changed things, but I changed things last Tuesday, 6:30 in the morning, and sent it out to everybody. So everybody had a written copy, 'cause, so that they could make good decisions, or read it and understand. This is just, this is what I wanna do, and I've told everybody on Saturday or Monday before we got into a meeting without any written copy. And so here we are, keeping folks with us to try to work and sort this out. What was your intent? What did you mean to say? And where should it be appropriately put? So, Council Chair, thank you for creating additional time and confusion.
Councilwoman Bowers?
I'm not gonna respond to attacks from the dais, but what I will say is that I did communicate this with everyone. I called our, our legal counsel to get this prepared. This is not a shock or surprise to anyone. What was a shock and surprise is how those amendments came out on Thursday. But, that's my only response, but I think that our council has a written amendment done.
Tuesday. Tuesday.
Um, yes, if, are you ready to move to legal counsel?
Yeah.
Chairman Bowers?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Thank you. We believe the correct way to do this is, we would strike section one, the motion would read, strike section one of motion to amend number four. And then, on, we would also strike section two, and on page six, line 20, add a new sentence after the word provided, period. It would say, insert section, and then insert, quote, "Section 1B shall take effect and be enforced from and after January 1, 2023." By taking out section one from motion to amend number four, we remove the reference to January 1, 2023. That's sort of where we're trying to go with this.
Are there questions for, for Mr. Connolly?
Could you please read that again, so I can write it down?
And this is, if I may ask to, to clarify, is this clarification on council chair's, Bowers amendment, correct? That's what we're talking about?
Okay.
Is everybody clear? Okay.
So, dealing with Councilwoman Raybold's motion to amend number four, we're suggesting that the motion read that section one of motion to amend number four is stricken.
You're saying section one, you mean line one, or?
I'm saying number one.
Well, number one on the motion to amend.
It goes away completely.
Sorry?
It goes away completely.
Goes away completely.
Okay.
Then, on number two of motion to amend number four, we would also strike everything there, and replace it with a new piece.
Okay.
That starts on line six, or, excuse me, page six, line 20. And we would add a new sentence after the word provided, provided, period. We would add a new sentence there. And that would say, "Section 1B shall take effect and be enforced from and after January 1, 2023."
Section 1B shall take effect and be enforced?
Shall be, shall take effect and be enforced from and after January 1, 2023.
And after.
That is section B1?
Oh, no, it's, if you look at the numbering on the ordinance itself.
Hmm.
I believe it comes out as, oh, excuse me.
B1. Well, just B, just section B. It would be, it would just be B. Section B.
Right.
B.
A and then B.
Yeah.
A and B. And just for the record, we're talking about section B that begins on line 16 on page two.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you for the clarification from law. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions, or is, yes, Councilwoman Washington, followed by Councilman Choe? Go ahead.
Councilor Connolly, is it still your opinion that section B and section, just a second, C are linked together?
I, we did discuss this a little bit with Councilmember Bowers, about whether or not he wanted to include C. And, I, I believe that the, I, I believe that the interpretation that he is taking with this, and I can't disagree with it, is that it would talk, C talks about all bid specifications, not just ones that are subject to the incentive. And so that was the reason why I think he wanted to have that, have that go into effect now. That's my understanding.
And that is your understanding?
I'm sorry?
And that is now your understanding?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Choe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like the sound of that. Mr. Connolly, how do we do this? We've got motions to amend, motions to tweak, and things are all over the place. We gave you some good language. Is that substituted in for this automatically? Or we, do we need to do some legal gymnastics to get the new language that you suggested into this thing?
No, this is the point where I'm wearing my purchasing agent hat, and I'll let the city attorney actually.
Got it.
Sorry. I think where we're at is that council-
We have a motion to amend already, right?
Right. Motion to amend number four was moved, seconded, and then-
Bended.
And then, yes, Councilman Bowers has made a motion to amend, which we just read into the record. And so, that's been seconded, had a debate. We can vote on that first, which would be Councilman Bowers' amendment.
Mm-hmm. As presented by legal counsel just moments ago.
Correct.
Correct. That's what I needed to know.
That's what's in front of me.
Okay. Is everybody clear? All right.
Just-
So, yes, Councilman McGinnis?
I'm just saying, so, he made a motion, but he's amending, or he's changing his motion? Or is his motion what you guys said it is now?
Well, it's- His motion, well, I guess, maybe after-
His motion to amend is-
Is gone now.
Is still there.
His motion to amend is what we just read in-
So it's substituted out.
We should vote on it.
It's amending, it's amending motion to amend number four.
Yeah.
So his motion to amend number 10.
Correct.
So I think, I think, if I may, the question is, I think you're right, is we have to withdraw, ask Chairman Bowers to withdraw his First Amendment, so we can substitute with what you just read into the record? Because that's out there on the floor? Or do we need to do that, counselor? I think that's what Councilman McGinnis is saying. It's, we have the, we have two amendments hanging out there. One is Councilwoman Raybold's, one is Councilman Bowers. But over the break, we have a new one from Councilman Bowers, but we-
I don't think it's new. I don't think that it, I don't, I'm not sure that it matters. If you remember before, what I originally said was that I would craft a motion to fit the intent, and I think that we took a recess for us to do that. However, if, if, I, I don't think there's anything wrong, if you wish to have him withdraw, because it's been moved and debated, I think your rules would require, I think unanimous consent. I could check on that. But if you would prefer that he withdraw and restate what we just did, we can do that. Again, however, I believe that it, the record would be clear that we took a recess to craft what he was trying to say prior to the recess.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Is everyone comfortable with that? Yes. Councilwoman Raybold?
If I could just get a clarification on what the language is at the very end. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced?
And affect.
After.
Yeah, we, we use, we use the same language that we always put at the end, the very end of our-
This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and publication, or after its posting and notice of such posting given by publication as herein and in the city charter, provided.
Except subsection B.
And then you, then you're saying, "Section 1B shall take effect and be enforced from and after January 1, 2023."
There is, thank you, Councilmember, I think there's, there's-
Different versions out there?
Hold on, let me-
Closing language is what she's talking about.
At the end of the bill. Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chrissy, or Mr. Connolly, did you need any other time from the podium?
We are-
Maybe, let me-
Okay. 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 Just to be clear, council has recommended we vote on Chairman Bowers' amendment first, and then go back to, is that correct? Is that what you, okay?
We may have a revision, though, to how the, how the motion should read.
We will be at ease.
Except, right, except B, except subsection B.
So he goes after this.
Correct.
He said?
Correct. All right, now.
Okay. Are we ready to proceed? Okay.
There is one more piece that we want to make sure that we want to add.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And this is on page six, still.
Okay.
Line 18, after the word ordinance, we would put in, comma, except subsection B, comma, shall take effect and be enforced, and then, and then the rest of it is, "Section B shall take effect, January 1, 2023."
Okay.
So everything except section B will go in force and affect now. Subsection B starts January 1, 2023.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Are we, Councilwoman Raybold?
If you could just say, state it one more time, and I will write it down exactly as you say it. This ordinance shall-
All right, so, starting from the beginning, then, on motion to amend number four, we're striking everything in line, in number one. And number two, we are doing two things on page six. The first one is on line 18.
That starts, just-
On page six, line 18. After the word ordinance, we'd put in a comma.
This ordinance, comma.
And then we would insert, "Except section B, comma."
B, comma.
And then, we go down to, to line 20, again on page six, and we would add a new sentence after the word provided, period. We would put a new sentence in there that says, "Section B shall take effect and be enforced from and after January 1, 2023."
So, it should read, "This ordinance, except section B, comma, shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and publication, or after its posting, and notice of such posting given by publication as herein and in the city charter, provided."
Period.
Period. "Section B shall take effect and be enforced from and after January 1, 2023."
Correct.
I think I have it down. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Counselor Connolly at this time? Mr., Councilwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Chair Wynn. Appreciate it. I just think, trying to draw this out and do it at a different time, and such is, is not needed. I don't see the urgency of having this passed today, as we already enforce all these, and we have them in our, in our laws, and, and with the, what the city practice already is. So I don't see the real need to do this, and I take back, part of my frustration is some of the testimony we had today, that a lot of people believe that our contractors and our subcontractors don't play by the rules. And we've got laws, we've got other types of ways to do this, to enforce our rules. And if they're not playing by the rules, or they're doing things illegally, we should be going after them. I don't know what difference this will make in going after them anyway, if they're doing things that are illegal. So, I don't feel like, this is something that's needed at this point. I think we can just go back to the main motion, and just start it all in, in January, instead of trying to bifurcate this thing out, and do different parts in different ways. I just believe that, again, this is stuff that's already in there, we don't need to. I don't see where we're gonna go with this that is really gonna make a big difference for the next six months.
Chairman Bowers?
You know, I feel really fortunate to be serving with six other people who are very, very smart, and have a lot of different skills and strengths. And that is why I don't wanna attribute any motivations or anything like that, but I, I almost refuse to believe that we have such a hard time understanding what this amendment does. And I wonder if it's almost another attempt just to delay it overall, because everyone up here is really smart, and I, I really admire everyone up here. So I, I, I have a hard time believing that this is that complicated to understand about only delaying the apprenticeship incentive.
Are we ready to vote on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, could we proceed, please?
I wanna clarify, just to make sure that what I'm calling now is going to be the amendment that was made by Councilman Bowers, that was clarified and read into the record by our legal counsel, and also reread by Councilwoman Raybold. Is that correct?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
Choe?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carrying 5-2.
We're ready to move on? Madam Clerk?
Now we go back to her.
The main motion.
No, the main amendment.
We replace the main motion.
We're, we're calling an amendment, aren't we?
Her motion number four?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Give Madam Clerk a moment, and we'll get there.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Choe?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
There we are.
And back to, we have still another amendment to pass, or to, no, we're done. That's right.
I think we're done with all of them.
Main motion, yes.
I believe, I believe we have the main motion to the bill in its entirety?
Yes.
As amended?
Yes.
All right.
Are we all clear on that, except for me?
I thought we just did that.
No, we have a motion on the main bill.
But go back to the main motion now.
I agree with you, Madam Clerk. I think we need to vote on the main motion. We've had several amendments. I also generally will probably defer to more votes, rather than less votes, so, but yes, I believe we need to vote on the main motion.
Yes. That's my understanding.
Yes. As it's been amended, I think, three, four times, yeah.
I'll call the vote on the main motion.
I got comments?
Yes, Councilman McGinnis.
Like to make some comments, if that's okay?
Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Again, I had a couple of other amendments, but under, kind of, following under Councilwoman Beckius's thoughts, it's so much fun to bring them forward at the last second, so, we really enjoy doing this a lot, don't we? Boy, look I just got from Sandra. There is a couple of other items in here that I hope there aren't unintended consequences for, and I think I've got support from many of our members that if they do come forward, we'd be able to change this. And come forward, there's a couple of things we're thinking about, linking on the move money, you know? Are we gonna, is that gonna be exempted or not? There's a lot of what-ifs that come forward on this, so, that's why I wanna be able to kinda say, hopefully there's a chance for this to come back, if there's some unintended consequences with moving forward with this. Couple of other comments, if I can make them, or I'll let him, and then I'll make some more.
Washington, or?
And I want some, whatever my turn is.
Okay. Councilwoman Washington, followed by Councilwoman Shob and Councilwoman Raybold.
Okay. I, I think that workforce development is critically important. I have always thought that we need more trades, and I think it's, we need more people in trades. And I think that's pretty obvious when we look around and we look at the projects that are slowed down, the projects that can't get done. We need more people out there working, and this is a big issue, it's not just about trades, it's about almost every single sector in Lincoln right now. And I know that Lincoln's not alone. I know this is, is gonna help a little bit, it may not be the end-all, be-all, but I wanna make steps and take actions that are gonna move us forward one step at a time. And I am exceedingly open to looking at other programs that will actually help increase workforce numbers here in Lincoln, because it's the only way we're gonna grow, and it's really important that we do.
Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've talked with most of you, you know my story and all my history, this is my second career, second lifetime. I did twenty years, didn't save enough money, didn't plan for the future, followed my heart rather than the dollars, and now I'm doing twenty more years. I wish someone had steered me toward the trades when I was in high school. Instead, they said, you should go to college, you should be something important, you, it, I don't have enough, I'm having fun, but don't have enough money now. So we, the city, and my fellow councilpeople and you guys in the audience, understand we need to do something to get more people active in the workforce. We don't have a lot of tools as the city to do that. So we took one from the market, from capitalist society, we're gonna incentivize something. And let's incentivize encouraging people to get into the game and try to recruit more people. That's what this primary purpose of this bill was, to incentivize people to embrace apprenticeships and encourage those more. I'm, Councilwoman McGinnis and I have had several long conversations, and there are parts we will never agree on, there are parts we agree on completely. And I think we both do agree that we need to keep talking about this and keep working it and we can get it better. And I'm committed to talking with you and doing those things. It's a good start. One of the first things I did when we first started talking about this is I reached out to Mr. Connolly and said, can you give me other examples of where we did this in city code? He goes, no, we've never done incentives before, this is new. So this experiment's gonna be an experiment, we're gonna test it. And I, if it incentivizes a few people, that'll be great. If it does, if it works horribly, we'll come back and meet again and talk about this again. But I, let's, let's go forward.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I, I love all your comments, because that's exactly what Omaha did. They said, let's move this forward, because we have to increase our workforce, it, it's too critical. And we heard all the great testimony, the state of Nebraska is trying to do everything they can to increase people to get involved in trades and apprentice programs. But the one thing Omaha did, they went back and looked at it, they didn't get it quite right from the beginning, they had to tweak it a couple of times. And Councilman McGinnis says, if we don't get it right, we shouldn't be afraid to go back and tweak it, to make it better, to really make sure that we are encouraging trades and apprentice programs, because that's how we're gonna really grow our economy. So, thank you all very much, everyone.
Councilman McGinnis?
Uh, yeah, I agree, and this is one step towards getting, helping with the workforce shortage, but I don't think this is the way that we should be spending taxpayers' money on incentive carve-out group, for one group or one specialty group. I think if we're gonna be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars towards workforce development, we oughta be doing it in a more comprehensive way than just doing one carve-out for. My biggest fear on this whole thing is starting the carve-out on bidding process. We've never done that, we've never favoritized or discriminated against other groups on our bidding process. They've always been fair and most reasonable. And this is kind of opening up a Pandora's box, as I see, that what's next? What are we going to carve out next for incentives? Is this something that we wanna continue going down the road, or are we, we're pretty good with it to start with? That's my biggest fear on this, is just the carve-outs for, for individual groups of people, instead of for the whole citizens. And using, actually using citizens' taxpayer money to incentivize this, but I guess we need to do something going forward.
Councilman Beckius?
Thank you, Councilperson Ward, just wanted to reiterate that workforce development is important and that the city, I think it's also important that the city has skin in the game as well. The, the city already has skin in the game when it comes to economic development in our community. We, we use taxpayer funds right now to grow our community in many different ways. This is just another tool to do that, and I am certainly happy to take a look at other changes and amendments as needed going forward, because I do want this to be right-sized and right-fitted to the city of Lincoln. And I just want to share with Councilman McGinnis that I am wholeheartedly in support of looking at changes, not that we'll always necessarily agree, but I'm happy to look at them, certainly.
I would just say before Councilman Bowers closes, that I also will be supporting this. It is about workforce, and a lot of us have said it's skin in the game, but you know, we have a big, big enough brain drain the way it is right now in Lincoln and in Nebraska, this is one more way, although it may not be perfect to a lot of, a lot of people. But one more way we can incentivize our young people to, to stay here and work here and help with our workforce development. And so I do think we need some skin in the game in a way, one more tool, we can encourage people to stay and, and learn and be educated to have those technical skills. So, Councilman Bowers, would you like to close?
Yeah, there's just two points that I wanna hit on, and that's talking about courage and gratitude. I am so incredibly thankful for the hundreds of letters that came in and support. I am so thankful for people that came and provided public comment, and I'm thankful for people that worked to get this across the finish line. And I'm really thankful for the conversations of good faith that the council had with each other and the respect that, when, respect that councilmembers had towards each other during this process. The other part I wanna talk about is courage, and, you know, we've talked about how this hasn't been done before and that this is something new. And so I am appreciative of those that will vote in support of this, to try this and to move forward, to address a very real need that both parties have agreed to is, is crucial for our state. And I also wanna talk about the courage of the people that came out and talked about, to talk about this in support. We had folks that wrote in that, you know, that they were contractors, and they said, we built this city. But I think workers built this city, and workers are the ones that are saying that we need to move forward with this. And I, I really applaud their courage to come out and, as working people, to talk about what needs to be done and taking on some of the, the concerns from people who are in a different position than they are. So I, I, I thank you all, I appreciate your courage.
Okay, thank you, with that, we're ready to call the, call the, the vote, please. Thank you.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-one.
With that, I'm going to pass the gavel back to Councilwoman Chair Bowers.
Well.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the next item.
We'll move on to section six, ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item six says approving a purchase agreement between the city and the county of Lancaster, Nebraska for the purchase of county-owned property generally located at 1005 O Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius, any discussion? Councilman Beckius, or Shob, sorry, my mind's fried.
This is the aging partners thing, Mr. Johnson, do you have, Joe?
Don't.
Yeah, thank you. Do you have anything to add to this? Could you, it's been a while since we talked about this, would you help me? First off, I apologize for the name, whoops.
It's all right.
No, it's not all right.
You're not the only one. Randy Jones, Director of Aging Partners, 1005 O Street currently. This is a proposal to enter into an agreement with the Lancaster County for the sale of that building at 1005 O Street. The arrangement is to sell the property and half of that sale will go back to the county, the city will retain the other half. The county will then give those funds back to us through the Victory Park project, and the city would apply their half to Victory Park project. We do have to go to, back to the county commissioners if the offer is ninety percent or lower than the appraised dollar figure. And, let's see. And we also have to go back to them if the closing costs are going to exceed $20,000 per party. So twenty thousand for the city and twenty thousand for the county. Urban Development is ready to start the process of surplusing the property, which means that they'll then announce that it's available to the public for purchase. Does that help?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your support of Victory Park, this is really exciting. It's one of those final formal things we have to do.
Councilman McGinnis?
I have a question, on this purchase agreement here, is for the county to sell it to the city of Lincoln? So the city of Lincoln can sell it as one entity, instead of having two entities having to approve, is that what this is, part of this?
That's how I interpret it, I'd have to get Tim C.'s review of that.
Okay, that's the way I read it. Basically getting it under one entity so they can make the sale.
And the county has already approved their portion of the agreement.
And we also would, do a third party, okay. We get here in town, I don't wanna rewrite it.
Okay.
Please.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll, thank you.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion, motion carried seven-zero. Item six B is change of zone 20036, application of Chance Hanshaw to change from AG Agriculture District to H3 Highway Commercial District on property generally located at 8230 South 91st Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, let's start with Councilwoman Washington, and we'll go Councilwoman Raybold.
One, I, I wanna thank everyone who has stayed with this project and this application to work out an acceptable solution. And with that, if you would give me the privilege of asking the applicant to come forward.
Sure.
Thank you, or the applicant's attorney, whomever.
Good evening, my name is Anna Post, I'm an attorney with Rembold Lucky Law Firm. I didn't say my address earlier, so it is 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 300. And so with that, I know we've been working very hard to try and find a way to accommodate this change of zone. We had, oh, this is my notebook, anyway. Yes, so I know I've had discussions that it sounds like we might be able to find a way to move this forward, but that it's gonna require more amendments to the zoning, contractual zoning agreement. And instead of trying to work those out on the dais, in this case, we're happy to have a delay to work those out in detail so we can get one thing that we think we have the votes together to pass in front of you. And so with that, it was suggested, we're happy to agree to a delay. As much as I know you might miss me if we have it more than one week, I think we're going to request a three-week delay on this one. So we make sure that we have everything in line and ready to present to you as one package.
Thank you, I'll make that motion on your behalf, motion to delay three weeks.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, seconded by Councilman McGinnis, any discussion?
No.
Yeah, okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item six C. Approving a conditional inexation and zoning agreement between the city and Chance Hanshaw, property generally located at 8230 South 91st Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius, any discussion? Do we need to delay this?
Yeah, move to delay three weeks.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Beckius, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll on the motion to delay?
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item six D is amending section 10.46.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to vending from trucks on city residential streets, provided that the trucks are not hindering or obstructing traffic, and repealing section 1046.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius, Councilwoman Ward, would you like to speak?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask our city attorney to elaborate, but I, I do know that I spoke with him and Urban Development Director Dan Marvin last week, and there are some, for lack of a better word, kinks to work out with our Lancaster County and City Health Department. So we wanna make sure and do that right as we let our food trucks move into the neighborhoods for a longer period of time. But I will ask Mr. Christie to explain that better than I can, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Christie, thank you.
Yes, well, Councilwoman Ward, I actually think you did a great job explaining it, there are just, we do believe that we will get there. We expect that this will get done, there are just a couple of things that we have to shore up, and so we are asking to delay vote on this item, and we will bring something forward that has all the necessary language in place and agreement with all of the necessary departments. So I, I do think that we're close.
And Mr. Christie, how long of time, I'm not certain on, two weeks, did we talk three weeks?
I, uh, two weeks.
Two weeks, okay, so, okay, very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I would move to delay this item, and I think there's two items actually that go together. Item six D and six E for three weeks, and we've already had the public hearing, so, action only.
Six D?
Only six D, I'm still on the wrong agenda, probably, I don't know. Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Moved by Councilwoman Ward, seconded by Councilman Beckius, any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington? McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item six E is approving the lease agreement between the city and Truck Equipment and Service Company for use in conjunction with their private business of the manufacture, sale, and servicing of trucks, trailers, and related equipment, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington, any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item six F. Ah, I get ready, I'm sorry. Amending Lincoln Municipal Code, section 10.02.055 Bicycle Lane to include use by other transportation devices on bicycle lanes. Amending section 10.02.125 Electric Foot Scooter to define an electric foot scooter as a transportation device rather than a motor vehicle that is propelled by an electric motor or in combination with the application of human power. Amending section 10.14.050 Use of Restricted Areas Adjacent to Curb and Changing Course to Permit Some Transportation Devices in the area adjacent to curb, if otherwise permitted by the trans, excuse me, if otherwise permitted by the Lincoln Municipal Code. Amending Title X Vehicles and Traffic to Add Chapter 10.49 Entitled Electric Foot Scooters to provide that persons operating an electric foot scooter shall abide by the provisions established for bicycle riders, and repealing sections 10.02.055, 10.02.125, and 10.14.050 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as heretofore existing, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius, any discussion? Councilman Beckius?
I'm excited to see the electric scooter program continue on in our community and to see that the appropriate period to test the program resulted in some changes that I think benefits our community and the greater good of our community. So I'm excited to see it move forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Item Six G is amending Title V of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to licenses and regulations by adding Chapter 5.52 to the Lincoln Municipal Code entitled Shared Mobility Devices, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius, any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. That concludes Section Six of our agenda. Section Seven is Resolutions First Readings or Items Seven A through Seven D. Ordinance's First Readings and Related Resolutions are Items Eight A through Eight C.
I do believe that Director Carey wanted Eight A and Eight B to be delayed for two, oh, there he is. Perfect. I was trying to remember for sure what you wanted and...
Thank you, David Carey, Director of the Plant Department, 555 South 10th Street. Yes, so we're requesting just to note on this evening that the Section Eight items, which is the carrier combined as three different related items, to just note that we'd like to, on behalf of the applicant, to hold the public hearing in two weeks and not next week, so it would be April 4th, not March 28th.
Move to delay to hold public hearing until April 4th?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion?
Just to clarify, that's on Eight A, B, and C.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero. Section Nine is our pending list, Item Nine A.
I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw this request to create a special paving district, paving assessment district.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius, any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-zero.
Move to adjourn.
Second.